I want this meeting to order.
Councilmember Sokolaski?
Here.
Councilmember Barton?
Here.
Vice President Tuttino?
Present.
President Griffin?
Here.
Councilmember Flanagan?
Here.
Councilmember Stokely?
Here.
Councilmember Leonard?
Yes.
Mayor Frost?
I don't have any announcements, but we got about one, two, three, four, five presentations. So I'll turn it over to Steph and we'll start with public hearing on 120 West Eleventh Avenue, Burt Property Holding.
Just to start, to announce, we did have an executive session where we discussed a matter of property and a contract negotiation. Ms. Stettler, if you're in the room? What'd you say? I'm sorry. Mr. Savona, hold on, I'm sorry. Mr. Savona.
This is a conditional use?
Yes.
All right. We're on the record, this is the time and place advertised for a public hearing before the Borough Council for the application of Burt Property Holding LLC for the premises known as 120 West Eleventh Avenue, Conshohocken, PA 19428. It's a property located in the Borough BR1 Residential District. Petitioners requesting a conditional use approval under Section 19(c) of the Conshohocken Zoning Ordinance in order to demolish a property that is greater than 50 years old in order to construct two single-family detached dwellings. The application has been reviewed by the Borough's Planning Commission and the County Planning Commission. The zoning officer is likewise reviewed it. Ms. Stettler, we ask you to raise your right hand, take the oath, and then give the council a summary of your zoning determination.
Do you swear the testimony or you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth that held you back? I do. This is the first time something has come through under Section 19(c). The property, this is not what I was doing. Okay, the property is 120 West Eleventh Avenue, is located in the Borough Residential 1 Zoning District. It's 85 feet by 128 feet. The lot size is 10,240 square feet. Current application is to demolish the existing structure, which is over 50 years old. It was built according to the county property records in 1874. The application contends that the structure on the site, the structure on the site has outlived their useful lifespan. Single-family detached dwellings are permitted in the BR1, BR2 zoning district. The proposed plan for the site of two single-family detached dwellings meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance in general with one exception, so that if the conditional use is approved, the developer will have to present his project to the zoning hearing board. He is proposing to do, the houses will have garages in the front. There is, one parking space would be in the garage and one parking space would be in the driveway. This is something that's in the zoning ordinance that prohibits parking between the front wall of the house and the street which it faces. There is a, one curb depression there already. And there is a, some kind of a access road to the west of the property. There is no information on who owns this, whether it's an easement, so the developer is hesitant to try and make any use of that because he doesn't have any rights to it. So it would be in order for council to consider the demolition of the house. Mr. Burt, the developer, is here, as is his attorney, Mr. Rath.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Rath, applicants, council, Jerry Rath, do you have any questions for the zoning officer based on our testimony?
I do not.
All right. Do you have a presentation for council, Mr. Rath?
I do.
You may proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Savona and Ms. Stettler did a great job summarizing, so I'm not going to waste time doing that. I'd like to hand out a, some exhibits if I could.
For the record, Mr. Rath, you've handed us a package of exhibits containing approximately, containing 11 exhibits marked A1 through A11. For purposes of the record, we'll identify them. A1 is your zoning application. A2 is the deed for the property at issue. A3 is the assessor's property records and map. A4 is a Google aerial of the neighborhood. A5, a Google aerial photograph of the property. A6 is a Google Street View image. A7 is an existing site plan, which is the Sheet 2 of 2. A8 is a zoning presentation plan, which is Sheet 1 of 1. A9 are architects' plans. A10, architects' renderings. And A11 is the curriculum vitae for Bradford Graul, G-R-A-U-L, Public Land Surveyor. Without objection, all of the applicant's exhibits, A1 through A11, will be admitted as marked.
Thank you, Mr. Savona. I'm going to try to be brief because it seems relatively straightforward to us, what's going on here. As Mr. Savona, I'm sorry, as Ms. Stettler stated, my name is Jerry Rath. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, which is Burt Property Holdings LLC. Mr. Bob Burt is here with me, as is our professional land surveyor, Brad Graul. I'd like to ask Mr. Burt some questions. I guess he needs to be sworn.
If you would, Mr. Burt, raise your right hand.
Do you swear the testimony or you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth that held you back?
Could you state your name and spell your last name, please?
Robert Burt, last name, uh, B, R, T.
And your business address?
323 West Sixth Avenue, Conshohocken.
Are you an authorized member of the applicant, Burt Property Holdings LLC?
Yes.
And you have experience with Conshohocken real estate?
I do.
Could you briefly describe that?
I've been building and rehabbing houses in primarily Conshohocken for the last 20 years.
Did you file a application for a conditional use?
I did.
And in the packet in front of you has exhibit A1. Is that the application?
Yes.
Did you acquire the property on March 13th, 2017?
Yes.
Exhibit A2 and A3. A2 is a deed. A3 is a printout from the Montgomery County Board of Assessment. Do they both show that you're the owner and when you bought the property?
Yes.
Could you briefly describe the property?
Single-family home in disrepair.
Okay, if you look at exhibit A4, does that show an aerial photo of the neighborhood around the property?
Yes.
And does it accurately represent the neighborhood around the property?
Yes.
And how about A5? Is that a closer aerial view zoomed in on the property, 120 West 11th?
Yes.
And does that accurately represent the area shown?
Yes.
How about A6? Does that show the front of the house from the street?
Yes.
And does that accurately represent the existing house?
Yes.
If you could turn to A7, that's an existing features plan prepared by OTM Engineering. Does that accurately represent what exists at the property now?
Yes.
Could you please describe the existing improvements?
As far as?
Well, just describe the property in general.
It's a single-family home, one 85-foot wide property. And right now I'm looking to tear that down and put up two single homes.
How about its condition?
It's in quite disrepair. There's a lot of structural issues, cracking in the walls, the foundation, single-pane windows, basically, all the HVAC. It's pretty much obsolete, all the building material, everything about it. There's sagging floors, cracks in the ceiling, cracks in the walls. It's just unrehabilitable.
If you could look at A8, is that a zoning presentation plan prepared by OTM?
Yes.
Does A8 accurately show what you want to do with the property?
Yes.
And what does that show?
Two single homes.
What about the existing improvements? They're going to be removed?
That's correct.
And how about subdivision?
Two single homes.
So it'll be?
Forty-two and a half foot lots.
And it will, how will the houses be accessed? So 11th Avenue?
That is correct.
Is there any alley access behind the property?
No.
All right, looking at exhibit A9, just briefly tell the board what that is.
Your architectural?
Yeah.
Single-family home with a front garage, two-story, with approximately 3,000 square feet.
In general, that shows what you're going to build?
Correct.
Okay. And how about A10? Is that a rendering of one of the two houses you'll build?
Yes, that's a front slash side elevation.
And will both houses essentially look like that?
That is correct.
How about the interior of the building? Is anything inside the building able to be used?
No.
Given your experience, what would you say the need is in Conshohocken for single-family detached residences?
Well, just checking before I got here, there, right now on the market, there are two single homes for sale in Conshohocken. That's it.
Is there a strong demand for single homes in Conshohocken?
Absolutely.
Will the proposed demolition and construction of the two residential dwellings on two separate lots, will that be consistent with the residential character of the neighborhood?
Yes.
Will the demolition and construction you propose have any adverse impact on the neighborhood?
No.
The historic conservation overlay district doesn't list specific criteria that you need to satisfy to obtain a conditional use approval. However, Section 1904(c) references Section 27-1805, which are conditional use standards for the multifamily dwelling districts that you're obligated to comply with. Have you looked at Section 27-1805?
Yes, I have.
And will your project, to the extent that they're applicable to your project, will you comply with them?
Yes.
That's all I have for Mr. Burt.
Council, any questions for Mr. Burt?
Yeah, you did check into the alleyway behind, I know there are two flag lots back there, and you're not sure if that driveway goes to those two properties, is that it?
It does go to those two properties.
Can I speak to that? It's actually sort of a legal issue.
Okay.
It's not a alleyway on the side. It's actually deeded to one of those properties.
Okay.
And it's presently shared, the use appears to be shared by the three parcels that are back there.
Okay.
So it's already shared by three, plus one of the houses on 11th Avenue also shares it. So there's already four properties sharing that driveway as of now.
Okay. Because there are no garages on that street in front. They're all, it's all street parking.
This property has one in front.
If you can technically call it in front. It's actually back along the side. But I'm just double-checking.
Bob?
Yeah, what's the height of these homes?
Yes, thank you.
The height of the homes, two-story.
But how high?
How high?
Uh, it's 25 feet.
25 feet?
25.
What's the height of the current structure?
I'm sorry?
What's the height of the current structure?
It's three stories, plus the roof is probably 35 to 40 feet. Excuse me?
The present building, 11th Avenue?
Yes.
So I do have a question. You said that the existing home is in disrepair. Do we do an report on that? Do we have an inspection on that? Is there anything other than, you're telling us that?
Besides the experience of a very long time?
Yes, besides that, yes.
No.
Okay. Because our goal is to preserve those homes. So for me, just a contractor coming in and saying, "It's in disrepair," is a little tough for me as well.
It's not the repair, it's what you're going to put into the property at, you know, I mean, you could sink a lot of money.
So I have a question. With your experience and the idea that you mentioned that homes have a life expectancy, can you talk a little bit about that? So we purposely put a stopgap in to try and preserve some of the older homes so that we would have single-family homes. Now I'm starting to hear terms of life expectancy of homes. So for me, I'm trying to understand that a little bit more to make the decisions.
Okay, so this home was built in 1874.
What year?
1874.
Okay.
It's a 150-year-old home. Basically, all the materials, all the systems in this home are no longer efficient. As far as there are structural issues, you can see cracking all around the building where they've repaired it. If you go inside the building, the floors are sagging, the ceilings have cracks in them, which it shows the underlying, it's plain to the eye. You can see that there are definitely structural issues with this property. That's the biggest concern.
So if you were to repair this property, what kind of dollar figure would it take to put into it from a contractor's perspective versus a do-it-yourselfer's perspective?
Honestly, I wouldn't even do it.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
As part of the planning commission, the county planning commission, they did recommend what Councilwoman Leonard mentioned, that we should take it a little further and look at the conditions inside the house. I don't know if that's something we can ask, that maybe we could have photographs of the conditions in the house.
Or a report?
Or a report, because honestly, you could, you know, not to say that you would ever do this, but some contractors would just come and say every house that meets their criteria, not actual criteria that would be considered appropriate for the planning commission. So I think I'd feel more comfortable if we actually could see photographs of the house, the inside, because I understand what you're saying about the expense of structural damage.
Right.
Especially wood damage. We all know what that can do to a property, but we have to be very careful. We did come up with this measure to thoughtfully decide on each property individually, not just as a blanket, sure, it's an old house, tear it down, because we've lost too many really great properties.
And you're telling us that a house built in 18-something is, for us, that's more reason to leave the home.
Right.
That was the goal.
Right. Do we need to make a motion?
Are there any other questions or anybody else have any other comments?
You want to? I do have another witness.
Okay. Any public, well, anybody in the audience who has an interest in this application, anybody resident or neighbor living nearby who wants to speak particularly to this application? Okay, just for purposes, for purposes of this, because it's a conditional use hearing, do you own a property that's within 500 feet of this?
No.
Okay, then we're going to defer your comment till later in the hearing process. If you were a party to this proceeding because you have
Oh, okay.
a standing, then you'd be entitled to speak during
Sir, you want?
or ask him questions. But if you're just here to make a public comment, we'll take that at the end.
Well, I had a question for the developer. So whenever you're ready.
We'll get to that, okay. Mr. Rath, call your next witness.
Thank you. I'll call Mr. Brad Graul.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you swear the testimony or you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth that held you back?
I do, so it'll be done.
Right, can you tell the board who you work for?
My name is Bradford R. Graul. I am an owner, general partner, I'm a professional land surveyor also with OTM Engineering.
Exhibit 11 in front of you, is that an accurate copy of your curriculum vitae?
Yes, sir.
Do you hold any Pennsylvania licenses?
I am a licensed professional land surveyor in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Mr. Rath, we've had experience with Mr. Graul. Board will acknowledge and recognize him as an expert public land surveyor.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
My pleasure.
My wife appreciates that, so I give her credit.
I'm sure she does.
Thank you.
Notice, I not recognize you as a licensed professional engineer, but a licensed professional land surveyor.
Thank you, sir.
So I assume you'll comport your testimony accordingly.
Brad, you're familiar with what we've been talking about so far here tonight?
Yes, I am, sir.
And could you describe briefly the neighborhood where the property is located?
The neighborhood is overall residential in nature.
Were you involved in preparing exhibit A7 and A8, the existing features plan and the zoning presentation plan?
Yes, I was.
Did you review the applicable Conshohocken zoning ordinances in preparing those plans?
Yes, we did.
Now, you were here when Mr. Burt described the condition of the buildings of the property, weren't you?
Yes, sir.
Do you agree with what he said about the condition?
Yes, sir.
Do you wish to expand on that in any way?
I can expand upon it other than what we saw from the exterior of the property.
Which was?
It's an older property, an older home. And the only thing that we observed was, was that it is an older home with the older style windows. We did not enter into specific premises.
What about the cracking on the sites?
We noticed those.
Okay. Let's switch gears to what's proposed. Could you briefly describe what's proposed as shown on the plan?
Yes, the proposed is two single-family dwellings that will be accessed from 11th Avenue by individual driveways with a single-family garage.
Now, let's talk about this setback for a second. You had handed me a amended plan this evening. So I guess we're going to have to call this A12. Could you describe to the board what A12 is?
Yes, essentially, this is the same as in your exhibit packet. There was a question raised by the zoning office and also the planning commission about establishing the set, building setbacks. In the zoning ordinance, there's a requirement to place the homes to the established building setback line. This plan amends that. Our survey crew returned to the site on Tuesday of this week, located all of the homes along the blocks. So this places the homes within that, within those parameters.
So is the proposed front yard setback shown on A12 consistent with the established building line?
Yes, sir. It's 21 feet 8 inches, 21.67, 21 foot 8 inches.
And overall, does the proposal conform with all the dimensional requirements of the zoning code?
Yes, sir, it does.
Now, there was some discussion about a driveway. You prepared a survey of the property, and in doing that survey, did you review the deed to the subject property?
Yes, we did.
And that's exhibit A2 in the packet?
Yes, sir.
This driveway shown on the west side of the property, is that part of the property we're here, is it owned, is it part of the same deed?
No, it is not. This is a question from our client from the onset of the project as to accessibility to that driveway. We did extensive deed research through the Montgomery County Recorder Deeds Office and could not ascertain that Mr. Burt has any access to that property or rights to access.
I think I asked you this, but I just want to make sure. Did you look at the codes for Conshohocken when you were preparing your plans?
Yes, we do.
Will the proposed demolition and construction be consistent with the residential character of the neighborhood?
Yes, it will.
Does it comply with the codes?
In my opinion, yes, it does.
Will the demolition and construction have any adverse impact on the neighborhood?
In my opinion, it does not.
Did you appear before the Conshohocken Planning Commission for this project?
Yes, I did.
And they recommended Borough Council grant the approval of this use, a conditional use, isn't that correct?
Yes, they did.
Earlier, I talked about Section 27-1805, which are the conditional use standards for the multifamily dwelling overlay district that we need to comply with. Have you reviewed those standards?
Yes, sir, I did.
And to the extent that they're applicable to our project, will the project comply with those standards?
Yes, they will.
That's all I have for Mr. Graul.
Any questions for Mr. Graul? Very well, Mr. Rath, just a housekeeping matter, have your, I believe the zoning officer indicated that this application would not be compliant with zoning in the absence of a variance from the zoning hearing board to allow the front driveways and the garages facing West 11th Avenue. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Has that application been submitted as yet?
I honestly do not know that answer.
Yes, it has.
It has? All right. But is it scheduled for a hearing before the zoning board?
It is. Schedule before the zoning board is dependent on the action of, on conditional use.
Okay.
If I just made it?
If, if the conditional use was to be approved, it could be scheduled as early as September the 18th. But it is dependent upon that. There's no point in going to the zoning hearing where the conditional use is not approved.
Okay.
And by web explanation, I was just asked to come
No, no.
to this hearing for the regular attorneys. I'm kind of pinch-hitting, so I'm not involved in the rest of the development process.
And I guess my only other comment would be looking at the aerial exhibit 4 on that block on both sides, it looks like there's no parking in the front on the property. There's no garages in the front. And that was something that we've, again, been trying to get away from if it's not already established in this neighborhood and it doesn't look like there's any front entrance garages. Yeah, but the front entrance.
No, not the front.
Right, none of them on both sides of the street. They have yards in the front. So that would be a change in the neighborhood, in the complexion of the neighborhood.
The subject property actually has a driveway, enters from 11th Avenue now.
Right, there are other driveways, but we're talking about the garage in the front that you enter into, and it doesn't exist right now in that neighborhood, at least not in those two blocks.
There's actually one down three to the left, there's one across the street at 139 West 11th, I know because I own it. And that's a front entrance with a curb cut. I believe there's one at
On the aerial?
Yes, maybe 126 West 11th.
How many curb cuts currently on the property?
One.
One.
And have you explored your options for putting the garages in the back with that unknown?
It's not unknown, we have no rights to it.
We have no rights to it.
You have no legal rights to it. Have you made any attempts to secure an easement over it?
No.
Can you explain, would that, would your use of that shared driveway be of interest to you?
No, really not.
And can you explain why?
There are three private homes behind that. I know they have sewer issues. There was recently a $30,000 sewer put in, in that driveway, and it's just something I'm not interested in getting into. Any new homeowner is not going to want to come into a shared driveway.
Thank you.
What I got to say about it, we've been hauling about putting up single-family homes. Now, if this house is bedded, he said it is, and he's going to put up two single-family homes, I'm all for it for the simple reason that people have been tearing down houses that's almost new and putting up twins. And Conshohocken said he wanted to get away from it and get single-family homes. And this man is ready to tear down it, from what he said, a pretty dilapidated house, and put up two nice singles. So in my opinion, I'm for it. So I don't know what the council would want to say. Bob, he's a builder, he knows about it.
I, before I can responsibly support this, I would honestly need more evidence as to the condition of that home. We knew when we passed this ordinance that for the developers, it was going to be a problem. We understand that. It's to protect the homes in the area. I, myself, cannot personally just take the houses in disrepair. I need more than that. I'm not up to the driveways. I'm still on that home. That is why we did this ordinance, and I need more for that. And the developers do need to understand, this is why we did this, to protect those homes. And if the home isn't, that's fine, but I'm not seeing that yet.
So can you get an expert opinion?
And photographs? Or have us walk through the building even?
You're more than welcome to walk through it.
I would prefer the
Right now, I basically use it for the local fire police. They use it to do drills.
Well, for purposes, just for purposes of the record, since we're sitting in an adjudicative capacity, we'd have to schedule a time where all of us would go out on the record and do the review of the house.
I still would prefer the experts
I was going to say, it may be more convenient, Jerry, if your client's willing to obtain a report from a structural engineer that documents the condition of the home to a degree that would establish that it meets the condition your client has described independently.
Although, although I respect everyone's positions, I like old houses too. The ordinance is silent as to any requirement as you're describing. There's no obligation in the ordinance, as there are in many others, that we do any type of inventory or inspection of the house and provide it. So as it stands
In that case, then it has to stay, because that's what the ordinance says.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, that's what?
Then the house would have to stay. Because that's what the ordinance says.
Well, I'll defer to Mr. Savona to advise you on that, but I think as the ordinance is written, we've done everything we need to get an approval. And I, like I said, I'll leave that to Mr. Savona to talk. And before I forget, if I may, I need to move my last exhibit, A-12, because that wasn't part of the original pack.
The exhibit's denied. There's nothing that delineates this from, if I'm trying to accept this for purposes of the record, there's no revision date on this drawing. It's dated the exact same as your, as your previous survey drawing. The only distinguishing feature that I can discern is that the front line setbacks have been changed, but it should be appropriately noted with a revised date. This carries the same date as the original plan that you introduced and was accepted into evidence, July 19th, 2017. It's obviously not the date of this drawing. So for purposes of entering it into the record, the admission of the exhibit's denied.
And Mr. Graul, just, he drew it. Can he add the date now to your official copy?
If he can. What's the date of the plan, Brad?
As of today.
Well, you can come up and fix it and reintroduce it, that's fine. I'm not going to mark it for you. There's a secondary issue, Jerry, and I think, counsel, as you know, in a conditional use proceeding is entitled to take testimony, close the record, and take 45 days to render a decision. I personally would like, I think, I'd like to see written argument with respect to your position that, one, the borough is entitled to approve a conditional use where you don't meet the zoning requirements. There have been cases out of this county on that. Secondly, whether or not counsel can deny the application for purposes of the, or on the basis that your request to remove a historic property hasn't been appropriately documented by what council's requested, and that is that the condition of the property merits its removal. The intent of the ordinance was to preserve structures pre-1967. You're asking for the entitlement to remove the structure without establishing that the property is in fact not rehabable or is not in such condition as to render it obsolete. I think council's entitled to hear argument, written argument with respect to that issue. So at this point, I will admit your Exhibit A-12, since Brad's dated it and signed off on the revision date, it'll be admitted as marked A-12. But my recommendation to council would be to close the record unless you have anything further, subject to the applicant's submission of written legal arguments with respect to those two issues stated on the record, and then we'll reserve our decision to a time within 45 days of tonight.
If I may, if council is not going to decide tonight, let me confer with my clients if he wants to provide an inspection and the photos.
We'll give you that opportunity.
When did you purchase?
You don't have to.
Was that in the amount of 410,000?
That's correct.
So I would assume if the intent was to tear down and build, there wasn't any type of inspections or anything that was done at the time?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's before I knew about the conditional use and all this.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Burt, you obviously are in the business of rehabbing houses and building new homes. It's been my observation in town that you primarily rehab homes. You don't tear them down and put up new ones. Is that correct?
It depends.
Yeah, in most cases that I've seen, you'll actually leave it standing and refurbish it and put it up for sale.
Yes.
So in this case...
But I bought this one for the sole purpose of subdivision.
Okay, so then you knew that going in you were going to do it?
Yes.
Okay, I was going to say mostly you leave what's out there standing and bring it up to spec.
Absolutely. I much, I prefer rehabs, much easier.
Mr. Savona, he has, Mr. Burt has agreed to provide photos and an inspection report from a third party regarding the condition of the property. So I guess we should request a continuance?
We can, since we're on the record, we can, council's inclined, we can continue it to a date certain, two weeks from tonight at our council's next meeting, so you can submit that. If you get it earlier than two weeks from now, you can submit it to the borough under separate cover, and then council can consider that. Unless you have further argument, we could take it in as part of the record, close the record in two weeks, and then render a decision after that.
Sounds good.
So I'll leave it up to you.
Okay.
Anything further? Is there any public comment with respect to this application before we adjourn the hearing?
I'm Judy Smith. I'm a resident right over here on Fourth Avenue. My question stems from conversation during our planning commission meeting about this property. There was going to be an analysis of the amount of impervious land coverage now with the existing house and the separate garage that's existing there compared to what would then be covered up with the two properties. So that was one. I don't know if you did that study. Number two, is there plans to preserve the mature trees, especially the one in the front of the property? Because it's a mature tree.
Am I still on the record?
I don't know, but that was a question.
So just for purposes of the record, the answers are set forth in the exhibit. I think Exhibit A-12 has the maximum impervious lot coverage that's permitted in this district is 60%, 60, six, zero percent per lot. If approved, each lot would have 43% of impervious coverage. So it would be within the required amounts.
It would be, but I was just trying to compare a before and after, because this is a lot with a very large yard, which is like, we love greed space.
But it, you understand if it meets the ordinance requirements...
Right. Okay.
Then it meets the ordinance.
But I was just curious at the before and after. And when I remember seeing the plans, I remember seeing on the, they're very small houses, and I don't even think there's a living room on the first floor unless those plans have changed.
Yes, there is.
It's...
I actually owned the same exact house, I built it on Sixth Avenue.
Uh huh.
It's quite large, for 3,000 square feet, two stories, which is...
Okay.
In Conshohocken, it's hard to come by, everybody, it was three stories.
Right. Well, we are, we want homes that are single homes that people can grow into and stay in the borough. That's our goal. And it sort of breaks my heart to tear down a single home that might be large enough for a family to grow into and then put in two smaller homes where as soon as they have their second child, they want to move.
It would be the same square footage.
Okay. Thank you, that's all.
Same square footage as the existing home?
Approximately, yes.
Any other further public comment before we adjourn? Anything else, Mr. Rath? Very well. Then the hearing for, on the application for conditional use for Burt Property Holdings at LC will be continued to a date certain on September the 20th at 7:00 p.m. in Conshohocken Borough Hall here in the public meeting room at 7:00 o'clock p.m. We're off the record for this matter. Thank you.
And I would just like to add for our audience's sake that we received all these documents electronically last Friday. Council did not just receive them now and have to process them now. We've had these since Friday afternoon.
Okay, go to B, Consider Primary and Final Approval for 10102 Forest Street. Plans for subdivision and land development. Mr. Thomas Jones, applicant.
Mr. President, as council will recall, this matter was before you at your last business meeting in August. It was continued or tabled to the meeting this evening. At that time, the borough staff had raised concerns with respect to the configuration of the parking in the rear of the proposed structures, as well as the configuration of certain bump outs. My understanding is the applicants had a chance to meet with borough engineer and borough staff. Mr. Hughes, if you could explain if there's the issues that were raised in the last meeting have been addressed to the satisfaction of borough staff?
Sure. Good evening. I apologize, I wasn't here firsthand at the last meeting. Was able to review with Ms. Checo and Mr. Sokolowski the issues that were raised at the previous meeting. The two issues, as I understood them, were related to the introduction of bump outs to accommodate curb ramps on West First Avenue as it related to snow removal and storage of room of snow, as well as turning radius for vehicles and parking in the garages in the back. For the first issue, Mr. Sokolowski and I met with Mr. Jones, the developer on site, and talked about a potential solution that would accommodate both the curb ramp crossing without introduction of bump outs, as well as storm sewer that we essentially agreed to in principle on the site. And Mr. Jones directed his engineer to draw a proposed revision to the plan that showed, to give you an example, the introduction of a trench drain similar to the bottom of East Third Avenue. Due to the steep slope on the street, the storm water doesn't necessarily get all the way over to the curb line and sometimes can just kind of sheet flow straight out into the intersection. So it's kind of an appropriate application in this case that allows us to deal with the storm sewer without rerouting the existing storm sewer, which now can simply be removed and abandoned. And the curb ramps will basically be your standard directional crossing in line with the sidewalks on either side of Forest Street. As it relates to the parking in the back, the applicant's engineer provided some analysis on the, on the issue, and that, that comment in particular came from our consultant, from Gilmore Associates, who has since issued a new revised letter essentially acknowledging the limitations of the space and the turning radius availability for certain larger vehicles, and recommending that the, that the attorney for the applicant and our solicitor get together on some restrictions related to vehicles in the association documents. And that's where that was left.
All right. And the, my understanding is there was a later revision of the plan, August 30th, 2017, it's referenced in your letter, I think?
I don't know the date, but I, yes, there was a new plan issued to reflect the changes in the intersection.
And is that for the, for the ten sheet preliminary final plan, and also the record plan and the turning radius? Or is it just, okay. So the other reason I raise that is we have to make the correct references in the approval resolution, which hasn't been updated since the last meeting. Any other issues or comments, Mr. Hughes?
None that I'm aware of.
All right. Counsel, it would be appropriate for you to consider, if you have any other questions to ask the applicant or any other issues to ask Mr. Hughes?
I do. So from what you're saying for the parking issue in the back, there is no way to correct that?
Well, dimensionally, at this point, the process went through zoning and the size and space of the houses was approved dimensionally. What, the issue really is the size of the vehicle that was being used to do the demonstration. And actually, you could call Mr. Estock up, and he can explain the analysis that he went through, and he could specifically explain the types of vehicles and give you real-world examples of what those vehicles are that can go in and out, which does not go up to including things like, you know, long bed pickups, things like that. But if you'd like, I could introduce Mr. Estock up, and he can explain exactly what his analysis was.
Good evening. I think the situation really stemmed from, in the engineer's review letter, they requested that we do a turning radius template study using a P vehicle design according to American Association State Highway and Transportation officials. And what happens with that is, when we designed the parking lot, we designed to accommodate all passenger vehicles. And we're, when I say all passenger vehicles, all large cars like a Buick Lacrosse, an Accord, a Cadillac STS, so those larger type vehicles. What it doesn't accommodate is F-150 pickup trucks and large trucks like that. Similarly, if you even look at the size of those vehicles, which tend to be like 19 and a half feet long, they're longer than a standard legal Borough of Conshohocken parking stall, which is 18 feet long. So even the own, our own ordinance doesn't even accommodate those type of larger vehicles. So what I'm trying to say is that we can accommodate all those large vehicles getting in and out of those garages and maneuvering through that parking lot with the largest passenger vehicles that are manufactured. Now, if a larger vehicle does come in, it's not to say that it can't get in and out of those garages, it'll just take an additional backup. Because the whole study is based upon getting in and out there on one swing, in and out of the garage. So it will accommodate, you know, those larger vehicles, but to do it in one maneuver, it would just accommodate the larger passenger vehicles.
So an SUV would be comfortably going in there? Because that's a huge difference from a truck.
Well, you know, what I would like to do is...
Get over that part, so I just want to clarify.
What I'd like to do is give the, actually, the dimensional standards. Because the shortcoming of saying SUV is because they make SUVs that have smaller turning radius templates up to the ones that, like an Escalade or something like that. So in this situation, we're accommodating a turning radius template of 39 foot in diameter, which is a large passenger vehicle. And it's also a vehicle that's like 16 feet long, as opposed to a Ford F-150 that's over 19 feet long.
Let's go past the Ford F-150 and get back to an SUV. So a large passenger vehicle has a much easier turning radius than, say, a Chevy Blazer?
Yes, a Chevy Blazer would be accommodated in this turning radius template. That would make it in and out of the space a Blazer.
Mm-hmm. Like a Navigator would not.
I actually have a list. Would you give me a moment? I could pull it out, and I could...
Sure.
Yeah, the, the passenger vehicles and sedans that would have this turning radius template, that's accommodated in one turning movement, we something similar to like an Impala, an Acura, an Avalon, a Taurus, a Chrysler 300, a Cadillac CTS. The SUVs such as like a Silverado 1500, a Suburban, or F-150s are the ones that wouldn't be accommodated. But the smaller passenger vehicles like a Bronco and those types would accommodate that turning radius template.
Okay. How about a Jeep?
A Jeep, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Just curious.
You're welcome.
I just have one. So you were saying with the homeowners' association, there would be a restriction that people could not park their big pickup trucks in that space, or how would that, was that was alluded to? People would only be able to park, you know, the cars that you said would fit?
Actually, the terms and provisions of that restriction, I'm not quite familiar with, because it's something that Ed Hughes was handling with the, with the boroughs. So I'm not quite sure exactly how that was worded. But I think the idea was it was going to be a full disclosure as to what would be accommodated back there, so prospective owners would understand...
Right.
...the limitations of those parking stalls.
Well, I don't think, I don't think that's the issue. The issue was, at least as counsel phrased the concern at the last meeting, the point of this is to try to keep parking off of the streets and on the residential properties, either in the garages or in driveways, so as not to overburden the public parking. Having, I don't know how you craft a deed restriction or an HOA restriction that prohibits someone from owning a 19-foot-long pickup truck.
Yeah.
Because obviously, if I own a 19-foot-long pickup truck and it's not convenient to park it in my garage, I may just park it on the street in front of the house or somewhere else in town. I think that's the concern. And so, I mean, if Mr. Hughes has some magic language, he can figure out how to put into the HOA docs, I'm all ears, but...
Yeah, I admit this may be in the situation where two wrongs don't make a right, but I believe all the time, projects are approved with two-car garages or one-car garages that count as a required off-street parking space, because that dimension is nine by 18. So if someone has that Ford F-150, it physically won't fit in the garage, but it has approved and legal off-street parking stall. So we're in that same situation as, as all those projects. I mean, if that have those type of garages, what's that?
Except for that they won't be able to get it in.
But the thing is, once they get to the garage, you know, a garage won't accommodate a nineteen and a half-foot-long vehicle. They're just not made that large.
How many homes are we putting in?
Three.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Any more questions? Do you want to vote on this?
The resolution is before counsel. It's, if counsel was inclined, a motion would be in order to approve, subject to revision to the first whereas clause to reflect the current revised plan date of August 30th, 2017, for each of the plan revisions. The waivers that are set forth in the resolution and the conditions associated with the approval were all reviewed and recommended by the Conshohocken Borough Planning Commission and I assume were agreed to by the applicant. I did provide a copy of the draft resolution to the applicant's counsel prior to the last meeting. I don't think we had any issues with the conditions. Did you, Mr. Jones? So if counsel's inclined, a motion would be in order to approve the resolution or whatever counsel's pleasure.
I have a motion to approve the resolution?
And I'll second it.
I don't have a...
You had to make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. I'm sorry. I got a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Sokolowski, if you could please come to the podium, along with Mr. Eric Bayless. Thank you. Mr. Sokolowski, if you could introduce the topic?
The topic is an energy audit that Mr. Bayless did at the community center and the results of that audit and what Pico was willing to provide to the Borough of Conshohocken as far as lighting in the community center. So I had initially had some numbers when I arrived here today, and Mr. Bayless has surprised me with even better numbers. So we're going to use his number. Basically, we were given the mandate to look at operational costs for all facilities the community center sticks out, simply because it has a mixture of old lighting, new lighting, and the amount of kilowatt hours those lights are on. And we looked into the multipurpose room. After we did the basketball course, we looked into the multipurpose room to see what kind of pricing we could get. The multipurpose room in the middle room and where the fitness rooms are. We were coming up with pricing in the area of thirty to forty thousand dollars to replace this. And our initial reaction to that was that we weren't going to consider it. And then I get a call from Mr. Bayless, and he will explain to you what Pico was willing to do as far as the community center and the considerable reduction in that cost to the borough.
Ray, did you want to put that on camera? If not, no worries.
Yes, you can leave it.
Okay. So good evening, everybody. My name is Eric Bayless. I'm with the Pico Direct Install Program. For anyone who's not familiar, our program is designed to help small businesses save money by reducing their energy consumption. So the primary way we do this is, you know, upgrading your standard fluorescent lights to more efficient LED lights. Pico, as also mandated by the Pennsylvania Utility Commission, contributes money towards this program. So it's a great program, all-inclusive, as I said. So we come in, we not only give the assessment, but we do the installation, so everything from A to Z. So what I'm going to go over here is just a example of what we're going to do. You know, a couple examples of some of the fixtures that we're going to upgrade. And Ray, I don't know if you could slide that particular sheet on there? The energy, yeah, the energy savings. Okay. So as you can see, there is a lot of fixtures that we would potentially upgrade here. And for everyone's best interest and time, you know, I reviewed this thoroughly with Mr. Sokolowski, so I'll spare everyone and get to the good stuff. So we'll start with line two, because this is one of the more substantial lines when it comes to savings. And line two is the multipurpose room. Now, in the multipurpose room, we have fourteen, what you'll see on the screen, as MH400HB. What that means is there's fourteen metal halide bulbs, four hundred watt high bay fixture. So that's the abbreviation for what you're seeing on the paper there. That particular fixture, each individual fixture there uses four hundred and fifty-eight watts of electricity, okay? So which breaks out to be six point four one kilowatts for the annual hours of fifty-one hundred and thirty annual hours. So that's pretty substantial. Twenty-four-seven is roughly about eighty-four hundred annual hours. So this is on roughly, I think, about sixteen hours a day, we determined, Ray. So this particular, these particular fixtures use thirty-three thousand nine hundred and sixteen kilowatt-hours. For anyone that's not familiar, the average small business is charged by Pico about eleven cents a kilowatt-hour. So doing the simple math, that those fixtures alone, you know, you time thirty-three thousand nine hundred and sixteen by eleven cents, and there's your annual cost for those fixtures there. So what we're going to upgrade all those fourteen fixtures with is NHB LED 99. Again, that's just an abbreviation for a brand-new high bay fixture that is LED, that is ninety-nine watts. So taking you from four hundred and fifty-eight watts per fixture now to eighty-four watts per fixture, so a pretty substantial reduction when it comes to your usage there. Not to mention, you know, I have all the specs here in for the light, giving you a better output of light and a better spread of the light as well. As most folks are familiar with LEDs, I see you have the nice LEDs in here. So the new high bay LED eighty-four watt fixture will run, obviously, on the same annual hours and go from now using sixty-two hundred and twenty kilowatt-hours. So reducing you from thirty-three thousand nine hundred and sixteen to six thousand two hundred and twenty, which is a savings all the way there to the left. And actually, Ray, you still have the old one there, but I have the updated one. It's twenty-seven thousand six hundred and ninety-six. As that sheet says, twenty-six five eighty-five, we've upgraded the fixtures. That's why there's the new price reduction there. The bottom line is each one of these line items goes into each individual room where we would do an upgrade to an LED light. In grand total, we're upgrading a total of a hundred and sixty-four fixtures, and your current usage is a hundred and forty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty-six kilowatt-hours. You can see that at the very bottom where I'm looking at the totals. Now, when we upgrade to LED, you will now be using twenty-three thousand six hundred and forty-two kilowatt-hours, which is a reduction of seventy-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-four kilowatt-hours. So a pretty substantial reduction. What does that all mean? Ray, if you wouldn't mind sliding the other sheet over? Okay. So the total project cost to upgrade the entire lights or all the lights that are not currently LED in the community center is twenty-two thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars and ten cents. So that's what the assessment provided there. Pico, the Small Business Direct Install Incentive, will contribute thirteen thousand ninety-five dollars and forty-seven cents towards this project. That's a fifty-seven point seven percent contribution to the overall project cost. So what that means is the cost to the borough would be ninety-five thousand ninety-eight dollars and sixty-three cents.
Ninety-five hundred.
Excuse me. I was adding in my fee there. Yeah, so that is ninety-five hundred ninety-eight dollars and sixty-three cents. The total annual kilowatt-hour savings, seventy-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-three point six zero. What does that mean from a cost standpoint? That means for that particular building, that's an annual energy cost savings off the bill of ninety-four hundred thirteen dollars and thirteen cents. So that comes out to be seven hundred and eighty-four dollars a month off the monthly bill. Your simple payback period is one year. So just over one year, twelve point two four months. And what that means is that's seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-three cents that you save every month off your bill. You know, that's how long it would take you, twelve months, to recoup your ninety-five hundred and ninety-eight dollar investment. So, pretty nice project there. You have two options in terms of payment. There's a lump sum option where we can do a five percent discount. Then the cost would be ninety-one hundred and ninety dollars, taking you down from the ninety-five ninety-eight. Your lump sum, simple payback period then becomes eleven months, so just under a year. Or you could do interest-free financing for twelve months, and the payment monthly would be seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents. When you pair that against the annual savings you would have once the project is installed, it's really like a fifteen dollar and forty-six cents out-of-pocket cost to do the entire installation for the program.
What's the life expectancy of the LED lights that you will be installing?
So fifty thousand hours. The LEDs are also backed by a seven-year warranty through the manufacturer. We have a one-year workmanship warranty as well, which means if anything happens to the lights within one year, whether it's an incandescent light bulb you screw in or one of the high bays, we would personally come out and replace it. After that, you're backed by all the manufacturer warranties, so seven years. Year seven, something goes wrong with a high bay, our manufacturer would send you a brand-new one directly in the mail.
Are there any questions?
Where do we sign at?
I get, from our perspective, from administrative perspective, we would ask if you could make a motion this evening to approve.
I'm motion to approve.
Okay.
I second.
The supplemental appropriation of the nine thousand, the number listed on your new submission.
I got a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Can you do that at my house?
Do you know what the electric bill is after though?
I don't know off the top of my head, Mayor. I can get that information for you, though.
Just a party statement, too. If there's any other facilities that you'd like us to look at or assess, we're happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The other project that we're going to be looking at for the Afield, potentially, South Cliff Park, but that's a different type of...
It's a different program?
It's a different program.
Current program.
It's infancy, I guess. That's good.
Yeah, it's classified differently because of the usage. So this program qualifies because it's listed as any zero to a hundred KWH usage on a monthly basis. So that's why this particular building qualifies. This would be a different program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Mr. Keveney from Pinoni to give us an update on the CMAC grant and the project update.
My intent here tonight, as Ms. Chekov indicated, was to give you a brief update on the status of the Fayette Street Traffic Signal Improvement Project that we're working on. By way of background, the project is being funded through the federal CMAQ program, which stands for congestion mitigation and air quality. So it's money that's dedicated to trying to improve traffic flow, reduce emissions overall, and also provide additional safety benefits to some local areas. The project entails all of the intersections along Fayette Street from Eleventh all the way to Elm, as well as Elm and Harry, and the signals on West Elm Street. The, I did have a map. I don't know if it's going to work. Oh, I'm sorry. Is this one here? My apologies.
You hold on one second.
Sure. And I have a, I'll show you basically a map that outlines the scope of work at each intersection. So it ranges from...
Mr. Keveney, I'm going to start over now that we've had the presentation up and loaded. So just to introduce Mr. Keveney, he is the Borough's Traffic Engineer and Consultant through Pinoni. He's currently working, he works directly with PennDOT and does a lot of liaison for the borough through PennDOT. The CMAC project is a grant that he's been working very diligently on. It has been off your radar for some time. The purpose of the presentation this evening is to reintroduce you and give you an update on where the project is. Thank you.
Thank you. So as I mentioned, it entails improvements at all the signals in the borough. It ranges from full modernizations, which I would detail as brand-new traffic signals, the structures that hold the signals, meaning mast arms, pedestals, new pedestrian signals, new pedestrian push buttons, upgraded video vehicle detection for the minor approaches so that the signals simply don't operate on a fixed-time cycle anymore. They'll maintain green on Fayette Street when there's no traffic on the minor approach, as well as emergency preemption equipment, which will enable police, fire, ambulance to safely travel through the intersections and hold all the other approaches with red signals. So the full modernizations are going to occur at Eleventh, Ninth, and Third. We have a partial upgrade at Sixth, where we're going to maintain a number of the structures there and the signal heads, but we're going to upgrade it with emergency preemption equipment, as well as vehicle detection on the minor approaches. And then, as we approach near the bridge, we're actually going to outfit those four signals, Elm and Harry, Fayette and Elm, Fayette and First, and West Elm and Oak with adaptive traffic signal equipment. So this equipment has been used in some of the more congested areas in the region for the past few years. It entails the use of video vehicle detection to not only measure the presence of vehicles in each approach, but actually the stacking or the queue of vehicles in each approach, and the signals dynamically allocate green time based on the demand. So it's certainly not going to make congestion disappear, but it will make it as efficient as it can be with the number of lanes that are there presently at those intersections. And then the remainder of the project will interconnect the rest of the signals on West Elm to the main system along Fayette, and then the entire system will be also, will be able to be communicated with by the PennDOT Traffic Control Center in King of Prussia. So it'll travel over their regional fiber optic network, and they'll be able to monitor the traffic signals in that location. With regard to schedule, where we are is we're still in the design process. There are a number of tasks that remain to be completed, but our current target is February of 2018, to have all the documents into PennDOT and approved by PennDOT. I would say there are a number of those tasks which aren't directly in our control. They require outside approvals. But at this point, we think that's a realistic timeline. We expect the project advertisement and bid receipt to be sometime in that March 2018 timeframe, and expect actual construction to start in the early summer. So with that, I can certainly answer any questions or get into any further detail.
Yeah. You said that the lights would stay green if there wasn't any traffic on the side streets?
Sure. So the number of the current signals operate in a fixed-time mode, meaning that they serve green on Fayette Street for a predetermined amount of time, and then they serve the minor approach for a predetermined amount of time, whether traffic's there or not. So we're going to be converting those to what we refer to as semi-actuated operation, which means that the signals will serve Fayette Street for the vast majority of green time, and they'll only change to green for the minor approach when there's an actual vehicle present. So just by the implementation of that operation, we'll gain some more efficiency on moving traffic on Fayette Street.
And along with those traffic lights, will you be doing anything in the street itself? Like a block the box?
Like a block the box? Or is that not part of this?
That's not intended, at this point, at any of the intersections. I mean, the only in-the-street work will simply be electrical conduit, so there will be some trenching and new electrical boxes and things like that associated with the construction, but, um, right now, things like do-not-block-the-box aren't being looked at at any of these intersections.
I think it would help.
It, it's something we can, um, certainly bring up to the, to the PennDOT as we're going through the rest of the process. Take a look at a few locations where that may be beneficial, sure.
The one in West Conch seems to be working.
Mm-hmm.
So you're actually gonna speed up Fayette Street? You're gonna increase the...
Yeah.
Well, during, during times of, um, you know, during most times of the day, there's going to be still vehicles on the side streets, so you are gonna get still, uh, a good number of reds on Fayette Street. But, uh, I guess in, in off-peak times, uh, it could certainly improve, it cer- could increase the flow of traffic on Fayette, sure.
But there also will be, um, the, um, thing for the residents, if they're crossing, to be able to change the light.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. There'll be, uh, fully ADA-compliant pedestrian push buttons. Uh, the hand-man signals with the countdown timers will be at all intersections. Uh, so, yeah, there's a lot of pedestrian safety improvements included in the project.
Will there be any speaking ones? Any speaking for the audio?
Yes, yes. We are implementing the, uh, the audible pedestrian systems, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any more questions?
Sounds great.
Thank you.
No, I just have one. I'm just trying to figure out how to actually ask it. Uh, so, when we have large construction project down off of the First Avenue area, how, how does the automated play into what goes on with the construction? Is there overrides? I guess I'm just trying to figure out. Um, there are lots of resident concerns of how traffic patterns will flow with construction. So when you're in an automated world, how does that generally, um, get adapted, amended?
Sure. So the, um, you know, where normal signals operate on, you know, a fixed, a fixed-time basis or a certain cycle, whether it be eighty seconds, ninety seconds, a hundred seconds, uh, the odd, the adaptive signals won't have those limitations. So if there are periods where, um, a lot of traffic stacks up on one approach, uh, the signal will recognize that and dedicate additional green time, uh, to try and clear that. Now, it may not all be cleared on, on one phase, but over the course of several cycles, uh, it'll more efficiently clear that traffic. So it's...
The programming of that, is that owned and operated by the PennDOT gods, or are local police...
No, it's, it's, well, police will still be able to, um, override that. So if there is an incident or if there is the need for police control, they can still override, uh, the traffic signals as they do today. Um, there can be other parameters placed to, to limit the, the flexibility of the system, if so desired. Um, but fundamentally, it's, it's, it really looks at traffic on a minute-by-minute basis and then allocates green time according to the volume. Now, certain intersections, when they're busy on all four approaches, that's when it, that's when it, uh, looks at predetermined limits to try and move as much traffic as possible. So during, during rush hour, you may not notice, um, a dramatic impact, although we've seen anywhere from ten to thirty percent improvements during, uh, peak hours, uh, but where you'll really notice it are on those, uh, kind of mid-afternoon, mid-morning hours, where there's still a fair amount of traffic, but you'll, you'll notice some quicker response, um, from the green time as it changes from phase to phase, or from approach to approach.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. At the end? No.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Keveney.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we holding public comments?
At the end?
Yes.
To the end, yes. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Gibbons from Concord Public Finance Advisors. Mr. Gibbons is here to discuss, um, capital improvement funding options, financing options. Um, again, this is a, we're leading into budget season. We've, um, already, council has been proactive and diligent in, um, already having conversations regarding the budget that have been successful. Um, this is a, um, last step in terms of capital budget items for 2018, and this financing presentation is to, is preemptive to the infrastructure conversation we'll be having next. Thank you very much.
I don't necessarily, I could just use this hand.
Okay.
That's fine.
Sure.
That's good. He's fine.
Well, good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to, uh, speak with the board this evening. Um, it's been several years since I've been in front of this board. Um, myself and my company, where the folks that put together the financing for this building, so we appreciate the opportunity to, um, come back and work with you again. I've brought, I've broken up my, uh, presentation in really three different pieces. Um, one is to kinda give you a broad, broad overall perspective of the bond market, so you got an idea of where interest rates are very quickly. A quick review of, of the financing that was completed in 2014, so you have a, a concept of what you have in place now. And then, uh, finally, uh, financing options, um, as Ms. Checo had, had men- mentioned, uh, for six million dollars of possible in- infrastructure improvements. So first page is, uh, an interest rate graph. You might recall, those that were on the board a couple of years ago, I had provided this as well. It's a Dow Jones Industrial Average equivalent of, uh, the bond market municipal bond interest rates. What it shows you what interest rates have done over the last ten years. Interest rates over the last ten years tracked, uh, in the bond market as they did overall. Interest rates pretty much continued, uh, a downward slope, um, from, you know, seven, eight, nine years ago to last year, just before the election. Uh, since the election, interest rates went up about a percent and have now come down about a half percent. The direction from here, nobody really knows. Um, the Federal Reserve is interested in, uh, increasing interest rates. Uh, they can really only do that if they see inflationary pressures. Uh, the market's not really seeing any inflationary pressures. Uh, the next one is, what is the Chinese markets doing? Uh, Chinese markets, uh, and the capital they are putting out towards projects is actually being, uh, restricted. And thirdly, the European markets are also not in a, a solidly large expansionary mode. What I'm trying to tell you is interest rates don't seem like they're gonna go up for a while. They are within a, a range. I think it's important to note, though, that i- if you look at the chart 2014 compared to now, interest rates are actually slightly lower today than they were, um, when you did your capital financing. Not to say that you didn't get a great deal, I think that you did. Um, and that's the next point of my presentation is on page, as labeled on the bottom, uh, right-hand corner is page one. We issued three series of general obligation notes. The reason we did that essentially was to get you the lowest cost of financing, the lowest debt service payments possible. And the way to do that was to break it up into three different pieces. Uh, the notes are prepayable at any time by the borough. Um, the final maturity of each note was twenty thirty-nine, which is a twenty-five-year term. You're allowed to draw on the, the, uh, the note, uh, corp, uh, proceeds, uh, through October of 2017. Uh, each note had a fixed rate through at least December 2021. Thereafter, interest on the notes will be variable, will have an interest rate cap. And I can go through that a little bit more on the next page if you'd like. I think, though, it's important to note, there is no point, there's no point where the remaining principal is due all at once. We sometimes hear of, of a balloon payment, there's no such thing as a balloon payment in this, this, uh, financing structure, there never was, and quite frankly, under state law, you really are not allowed to have one anyway. So, uh, the next page shows you what the debt service payments are currently on the three different notes. Now I'm on page, uh, two, labeled in the bottom left-hand corner. Uh, column two is the Geo note of, of Series A fourteen. B of fourteen is, is column three, and, uh, uh, the taxable, uh, note of fourteen is column four. The total payments are in column five, as you can see, it's approximately six hundred ninety thousand dollars, uh, through twenty, uh, excuse me, six hundred ninety thousand dollars then decreases, uh, to six hundred twenty-six thousand dollars for just one year, and goes up about seven hundred twenty thousand dollars. So that's, I, I think also important to note, uh, as I mentioned earlier, all these financings were completed with an interest rate cap. The payments you're seeing in front of you assumes a worst-case scenario, so that you won't have any payments, uh, that you'll see ever any higher than what's on this sheet. So that's important, I think, to, to note. So, uh, the next page is, is, I think, what you really wanted to talk about this, this evening, was that the, uh, the borough's considering infrastructure improvements. As I understand, the list could be as great as six million dollars. So, uh, administration asked me to put together, uh, financing scenarios, uh, assuming six million do- dollars. I think that at this point, though, it's very important to just look at all this stuff, just like how you think about a home, home mortgage, no more, no less. Number one, uh, you're not gonna finance your home mortgage longer than you think the, the, the building will be, have a, is a useful life. So in other words, i- if you think that the building's gonna be around for ten years, you're not gonna finance it for fifteen. The same idea applies here. Tax law only allows you to borrow for three years of capital needs. So if, if, uh, you assume that you would do a borrowing in 2018, that would be, uh, your capital needs for eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. Um, and what I did, then did was I said, okay, well, just like a home mortgage, the longer the term, higher the interest rate, but the lower the annual debt service payment. And that is what is contained on page three. Uh, I, I used, uh, a, a bond issue as an example, just because it's a little easier to put together a presentation. You might recall the folks that were on the, the council a couple of years ago, we looked at bond financing for the municipal building as well. You got lower payments, uh, through the, the bank loan financing than a bond-issue financing, and we would do the same type of comparison, should you decide to move ahead with any type of financing, uh, in the future, where we would look at what gets the lower payments, uh, bank loan or bond issue. So, uh, I'm now in, uh, column one, where I showed, uh, five different options, and the, the, the difference between the, the five different options is just really the term, just like a home mortgage. They essentially are all borrowing the same amount of money. As you can see on column four, options one through five, the longer the term, the higher the interest rate, that's just like a home mortgage as well. Column five, uh, is the annual debt service payments, uh, for the amount of, the term of the borrowing. So for example, if you're only borrowing for ten years, it would be about six hundred ninety thousand dollars, uh, for a fifteen-year loan, about five hundred forty-one thousand. A twenty-year loan, about four hundred thirty-four thousand dollars, and you get the idea. Um, after that, then, is obviously also the other part of, uh, any type of borrowing you do for home mortgages. The longer you ha- have the mortgage outstanding, the more interest you pay because you're paying the principal back slower. I tried to put together some type of context of, if you decide to, um, look at this financing only in millage impact, and that's what column seven and column eight is. Um, I, uh, assumed a, a, the value of a mill was six hundred thirty-four thousand dollar, dollars, uh, per mill. Um, and as you can see, options one through five on column seven give you a breakdown on what the, the annual cost in mills would be. Then I tried to say, okay, well, that's the cost in mills, what would that cost be to an average homeowner whose market value is three hundred twenty-two thousand dollars? Uh, that figure actually, uh, was jointly determined based on a, um, a Zillow market analysis that says the average cost of a home is three hundred twenty-two thousand dollars in Conshohocken. Obviously, it's an average, it could be higher, it could be lower, but I wanted to give you some illustrative, uh, idea of how much that might cost. So as you can see, column eight then shows you, uh, what the average cost would be if your house was assessed at three hundred twenty-two thousand dollars. So again, the whole idea, the, the thirty-thousand-foot picture, what I'm trying to give you is just like a home mortgage, the longer the, uh, the term, the lower the payment, the more you pay over interest, and interest costs over the term. So it's really, um, kinda then branches over to like almost an art versus a science. You know, just like our own home budgets, what can we afford? I think that usually ends, ends up being the, the driving decision-making, uh, tool when you put together a, a infrastructure program that you're gonna borrow for. I'll stop there for questions.
Can you go over, um, shortly, time, timeframe? So, um, if a decision were to be made at the end of September, that there was a direction that council wanted to move, what would the rest of the fiscal year look like?
Um, it depended upon when you actually wanted to, to spend the money. And again, just assuming that you want to spend your first dollar, I would presume, uh, on January the first, um, we would settle around January the first. So backing off the January first deadline, uh, it would take you between sixty to a hundred twenty days, depending upon, uh, council, uh, timeframe of meeting dates, et cetera, to, uh, enact the ordinance and actually to have the, the, the money in your hands. It all depends, again, and, and we had this discussion, and this is the same time of events we used in 2014 when we were examining bank loan or bond-issue financing. So conservatively, uh, you could say a hundred twenty days, and, and very quickly, you'd probably do it, uh, a lot less than a hundred twenty days.
So I'm fearing we wouldn't have to wait till January one?
No.
If we chose to go this route, we could actually begin...
That's correct.
Yes.
God bless you.
Thank you. It's a, it's a rather lengthy process that, we're already into September, so, uh, depending on when you'd want to close, you'd probably realistically have to start probably at least sixty days out.
Yes. And I also think that, um, part and parcel of the whole financing process is your determination of how much you want to borrow, because you have to essentially, uh, say, stake through IRS code that you're gonna spend the money, as I mentioned, in three years. You have to determine what those lists of projects are. So I think that's partly why I'm here today, is to give you a, a general idea of what the payments are, um, and then kind of back end into, okay, how much are we gonna borrow, uh, for the X, Y, Z projects that we want to undertake.
Any other ques- questions for Mr. Gibbons?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So on the curtails of that conversation, I'd now like to bring up Mr. Hughes and Mr. Sokolowski to sit at the front of the table, um... for a conversation regarding infrastructure. And the direction that, uh, Borough Council would like to go into or consider are different options. I think goals for this evening, now that we have a, a larger understanding of financing options that are available, um, we have other... Yes. So we have other, um, goals and objectives that we've already set for 2018. So again, the infrastructure isn't this isolated conversation, it fits in with all of the goals and objectives that have already been set. This particular topic required further discussion, which we're doing this evening, and, um, we'll move forward with literally a discussion. What do you feel the borough needs? What do you want to see done? How do you want this larger program potentially structured? We do have, um, a tool that Mr. Hughes will bring up, that if you, should you want to, based off of the infrastructure management plan, um, pull out varying streets for infrastructure projects and see how those numbers would add together. We can do that. Again, this is your time to discuss and make some decisions moving forward.
That's the bridge to West Conshohocken.
St. Andrews.
So I guess the, just to start the conversation, um... what problems are we currently facing regarding infrastructure? What are your thoughts when you're in the borough?
Ray, Ryan, what, what do you think are, are, are problems that we are facing with the, the roads and...
I think some of them are obvious. Some of them are the conditions of the road that we all can see and we're all driving over the top of them. The thing that worries me a little more is what we don't see. And that's our, you know, stormwater system, our, our inlets, uh, and our failing inlets in a lot of the intersections. Those are the things that I don't know whether we can wait long-term to take care of. They, we've, they've been put off for a long time, obviously. Uh, some examples, Harry Street around the community center, I think we've all been there, we know what that looks like, and it's looked like that for a long, long time. Um, and with, every year that goes by, we're kind of dodging a bullet, I think, without someone getting injured, severely injured. Vehicles are constantly getting damaged there, we, we see it all the time. But, um, that's one of my big concerns. And one of the concerns when I took over that I didn't really realize, uh, was gonna be as big of an issue as it is. So, um, you know, obviously, we can see the milling and overlay changes the appearance of a road and makes it easier to go, easier to drive on, but what's under... But what's underneath is going to cost a lot of money to take care of. And it's probably not something that we can look at long-term, something that we're probably going to have to look at at shorter term.
And the sinkhole we had, I guess that was two years ago, at Third and Maple, the one that caved in.
Oh, Hurricane Irene, I believe, yeah. 2011.
How long ago was that?
2011.
Yeah, 2011.
$130,000 hole.
So where are the problems that you just addressed? Is there a specific location?
That is one of the main ones. I think Harry Street, Harry Street, Springville Avenue, the lower section of Springville Avenue, where we have this, where we have a lot of stormwater going through Springville Avenue. There's actually a stormwater system where you can stand up, actually stand up underneath Springville Avenue. That's a concern. That's been around for a long, long time.
Right, how old do you think they are, Ray? Like 50 years, 100?
Yeah, you know, we looked at that storm sewer system a while back, and the structure of it was fairly impressive. It's old school. It's got big, you know, one-inch diameter, probably reinforcing bars that go through the lid of it. Because we had to cut through it, and I think Pico had to chop through it.
Yeah.
You know, and there's always something about old concrete, it's just better than new concrete. But it's, it needs to be monitored.
Understand, these are literally within feet of houses and garages.
And they go under.
And so under.
Under garages.
So can I do a little history, brief, quick history? So over the past five years, what have we invested in infrastructure? And how we've pieced together or done what we've done? Because we've got a really nice manual of everything that needs to be done. But can you give us a snapshot of what was done over the last five years in comparison to what all needs to be done? And how long that could potentially take us if we did the same process?
Sure. I can guesstimate dollars from my memory, but if I were to start in 2012, I know that we were, I think we were either starting or one year prior to, no, we had started. We had started the Maple Street program, the multi-year Maple Street program. That was, I think, when all was said and done, was a four-year program that was 300 and change each year, 320, 330, 340 in that neighborhood, to do three phases of storm sewer and handicap ramp projects, and then paving, which was in the same ballpark. So you could say for sake of argument, that project was approaching a million and a half or so to get all of Maple Street done over the course of, I believe it was 11 to 14. I know we did the paving in 14. In the meantime, I don't know that we did a separate paving project in 11. I know we did $100,000 in '12, and we did about $100,000 in '13, and I think we did about $100,000. We were kind of just budgeting that $100,000 that was coming out of liquid fuels in each one of those years. And that was one of these piece-together, block-by-block, mill and overlay-only type of programs. So in the last five years, if you were to say Maple Street plus mill and overlay, you might be in the neighborhood of $2 million. We also had done, I forget what year we started this, but actually included doing video of that channel you were just talking about. We did a video of a bunch of different storm sewer systems and started doing what you guys might recall as, we called it a storm sewer rehab program. That was also something that was being budgeted in that $100,000 neighborhood. I think we did, I think ultimately, we did two contracts for that, and again, probably in the $100,000 range for storm sewer rehab. So you're probably a little over, a little over $2 million for what we've just been dealing with in terms of infrastructure, paving programs, storm sewer rehab, from 2012 to the present.
Now, that's notwithstanding one that you probably all had to experience, was Hector Street and Alma Street, when they did 2280 feet of piping on both Springville Avenue, Hector Street, and Alma Street. We didn't have to pay for that, that was. Pico and Aqua had taken up the roadway, and we were lucky enough not to have to pay for.
All of it.
All of it. That would have been considerable.
Well, what that was too, was we had, I think, probably just again, you know, $100,000 paving budget, and by rolling in their contribution to restore the area that they did, we probably got a little bit of a bang for our buck one hour.
Now, I don't know if you measure it this way in this industry, but if you look at roadway mileage in the entire town as a percentage of what has been completed over the last seven years to what needs to be done, what percentage?
So we have about 17 miles. I'll even go back to 11. Let's throw in Springville Avenue, just for fun, right? Let's just say for sake of argument, Springville Avenue is a little less than a mile. Let's just say it's a mile, and Maple Street's a mile. Those are the two major projects in the last seven, eight years that were ultimately paved. And then each other program might have only been five or six 500-foot blocks. So it's going to take a handful of those to get to a mile. So we might be talking about three, four miles out of 17, just off the top of my head.
Thank you.
That's not good percent.
So.
We also have very wide streets. In fairness to the small amount of liquid fuels dollars that need to be spent when you're doing 40- and 50-foot wide streets, it's a little different than in other communities that might have 26, 30, 30, 35-foot wide streets, is what it is.
And with the more uses that we're getting on these streets, by the time this project is finished, and we're moving into another one three or four years down, you're starting to get into a maintenance program with the street that you just know and they were laid, and did reconstruction with three or four years ago. We already have issues on Springville Avenue, that's one of the examples, just cracking in the middle of that street. And that eventually is going to be, going to have to be addressed in some way, in a relatively major repair.
So looking at doing the project this way, investing all that money now, how does that benefit and save the borough in the long run? And how would that work?
With the initial investment on doing the entire borough, bringing it up, well, it's a clean slate, number one. The reduction in the maintenance costs to those streets is going to be substantial. Mainly, that's what it's going to be. And you're moving the borough, what would you say, at least 15 years down the line before you'd be looking at any major, major road infrastructure, a project, other than maybe a Penn道?
Yeah, it's, I would call it this, it's kind of a, it would be kind of a reset. Kind of reset, and then get back to doing more. You know, one of the things I described in the last presentation that we had here was, doing more of what Ray's describing is sort of the ongoing maintenance for the streets that we did just pave, that we've been just sort of hiding from, because we've got to get the dollars into some of the streets that are in such bad shape. So now we can, if we were to be able to do that reset, then we could get into doing patching and sealing and things like that when a street maybe was only paved five years ago, and get another 10 years, get another 15 years out of that street, instead of needing to do a full mill and overlay after maybe only 10 years. Which is what we see with areas of Springville Avenue and West Sixth Avenue, which was a 2006 paving job that, you know.
And with equipment and technology being what it is now, some of the things that we have access to, that they didn't have access to before, you see all these little patches in the streets, it's like a checkerboard. Those are caving in. There's infrared patching now, where they just come and do an infrared patch over the top of an old patch, and completely mesh within a couple, within a couple of months. Those are things that would be available if we had a clean road. You wouldn't want to do that on a road that has spider cracks everywhere.
Right.
You wouldn't want to spend the money to do it.
So are there any other works in the borough, projects in the borough that are dependent on having this done, that we can't do until this is done, or?
Are you referring specifically to the recommended projects? And what they would need to proceed?
Well, there's, isn't it, it's two things. It would be what you're doing with your infrastructure, and you'd have to do a large amount of utility coordination, because you don't.
I mean, referring to outside utility works? Well, they've done quite a bit recently, but every, I know you talked to the Aqua guys quite a bit. Every time we seem to think that they've done what they're going to do, like I think at one point, Rob McNamara said, we're going to do like two years' worth of work, and then we're going to disappear. Well, that wasn't necessarily the case. So Mike's absolutely right, we would absolutely have to get this full scope of whatever these projects are going to be out to Aqua and Pico and the Sewer Authority, and Verizon, and anyone that has anything underground, and make sure that they knew, get in here and get your stuff knocked out for real this time. But I don't know if you know of any, on the ground projects right now.
We have a good idea that Aqua and Pico, on the lower end of the borough, Aqua and Pico have done a substantial amount of work. And they put in 100-year ductile piping. So it's not anything that we should have to address unless something moves, shifts, and causes a problem. But in the upper avenues, yeah. Obvious example, Ethan Jones recently, they had a six-inch water main that cracked seven feet across and raised the entire intersection up. Those are the issues that we would have to, we'd have to definitely discuss that before you put in that kind of money. Now, they, I have to admit that as far as I believe, Paul feels the same way, that Aqua and Pico have been very helpful recently, and very proactive with what they want to do in our municipality and many other municipalities, because we've also been proactive. We've reached out to them, we've had multiple meetings, there's never been an issue with any of their supervisory personnel. And I think that going forward, that would have to be the case. It would have to be something, that it would have to be very well-coordinated before you take on that expense. And they understand it. They will tell you that they are not in the business of roadwork. They don't want to have anything to do with it. So if they can mesh into a program that we're doing, I believe they would be 100% for it. They've been in Lower Marion now, after they left us, they've been in Lower Marion now for about two years, trying to do that. And if you're familiar with Lower Marion, the Gladwin section, it's a nightmare for them to work out there. They want to be in there, put their stuff in, and get out, and never have to come back. And that's what they would want to do here, so.
Right.
Well, there's a couple of factors that are in play. I see this in municipalities all over the state, actually. The PUC changed a number of regulations a couple of years ago that involve, in particular, gas line changes, which most gas companies now are required to upgrade their cast iron or steel gas lines to PVC or things that are safer. So most of those gas utilities are in the process now, and they have, I think, 20 years to replace all of those lines, laterals, and connections. So that's one aspect that's in constant flux. What normally happens when you do a borough-wide project like this is there's a couple of things you want to do. One, as Ray said, you want to coordinate with the utilities as much as possible so that you know exactly where they're going to be working, so they're not going to come in and tear up the street right after you've paved it, which defeats the purpose. Second, you tend to want to implement what we call a street degradation fee, so that, and sometimes you want to put a moratorium on opening of the street for the first number of years after it's paved. And you assign fees and limitations, and you change your specifications with respect to how you resurface.
You have one- to five-year fees that are bumped a little bit.
But you, most municipalities, when they're doing it, will beef those up and actually consider imposing a three- or five-year moratorium so that there can't be any utility cuts on a freshly paved street, simply just because it accelerates the degradation of the pavement you just spent all this money on.
That has been discussed. When I was on the building side of this, that was discussed. And we run into the fact that we have a lot of developers building houses, two houses where there was one. So now they have to dig into the street, they have to put the utilities in. So they have to patch, Maple Street's an example. I mean, it probably wasn't four months after Maple Street was completed where the top end had to be cut into, because a developer purchased one lot, put two houses on it, and utilities had to be put into the second house.
So for a project this big, what are the expected benefits for the borough, the businesses, and the residents? In general, in the long run?
Borough residents and businesses, it's going to be the same. The headache that, if you, people that live on the lower end or travel the lower end, if you remember how difficult that 18 months was, dealing with having to do road repairs there, parking there. This will be an inconvenience for that period of time. And there's a good possibility that most of those people won't have to experience that inconvenience.
Ever.
Ever. Because again, technology has caught up. Things are lasting a little bit longer, and maintenance to those things are a lot easier to do. The patching that I'm talking about, that takes 15 minutes, rather than someone standing out there jackhammering, doing. It's just an entirely different program when you have a pristine road that you're cutting into, as opposed to a road that is damaged all the way around, and you're just trying to repair this one small section.
One thing I would say in terms of benefits, sorry, real quick, is if you take the Harry Street project as a great example, and then dabbled in looking in this report at Forest Street as kind of a sister project, if you will. But Harry Street's really the bad one, and I think the major thing is pedestrian safety, I would say. Because so many of those corners have those plates and pipes and drop-offs and things like that, kind of like over on Walnut Street, those kind of scenarios are just everywhere, all up and down the street. And then you take those scenarios, and then you mix in things like the stormwater not being managed, those puddles freezing, you know, piles of snow in the winter concealing those conditions underneath where you can't see them and people can kind of fall. And so I think that while, you know, having a nice new paved street is, you know, traffic's a little smoother, trucks don't make as much noise, things like that, but pedestrian safety is a big one.
Okay. Go ahead, Karen. Do you have a question?
No, go ahead.
So with all of the other improvements and lists that we have for the borough on what we need done, in your opinion, where does this fall in the list on priority and benefits?
Well, without, obviously, having done some kind of cost-benefit analysis with all the different types of projects.
Yeah, I don't feel that.
Top of my head, you're probably always going to have me say it's, you know, if it's not number one, it's pretty close. I think the thing with infrastructure, I mean, they're making TV shows about it, the crumbling of America, right? So it's just something that's going to continue to get further and further behind. That's why I use the phrase "reset", and, or "fresh start," or whatever you want to call it, is, it's, okay, it just gives you a chance to like, say, okay, now it's all caught up. You don't have to worry about the fact that that's crumbling. You don't have to worry about scenarios like behind CVS a few years ago, we had to do an emergency paving project for the whole street because it literally blew up over the winter. Those kind of things, you know, are going to happen here and there, and you're going to have the main breaks in those types of scenarios. But in terms of needing to kind of scramble around and do these repairs, and have the public services crew have to break off of what they're doing to go fix streets, would really fizzle out for a while.
We have nothing to compare it to. I mean, I've lived here pretty much all my life, and it's not like you can say, well, in 19, such-and-such, we did this, and we had a pristine town with great roads.
Right.
So we've never had that. This would be unique to the borough of Conshohocken.
And as an investment, it's, in the long run, a savings for us, I'm assuming?
There's always, again, cost analysis is what you're going to have to, that's something that, you know, I'm sure Paul could give you an idea of.
I mean, a big part of this was the very simple concept of the economy of scale. And that's one part of the cost savings. But then the other part is, when you're on a regular program and you're able to go out and do planned maintenance, you know, planned seal coating programs for a bunch of streets that were just paved five years prior, you're going to be able to put those out to bid and get a, you know, more cost-effective project than kind of going around and doing spot repairs at a kind of a higher unit cost.
And doing it this way, with everything that we have to have done, we would end up on a maintenance schedule, correct?
Absolutely.
Because we'll be doing one part of it on one side, paving on the other.
Covering all the places.
So just like the borough would be resetting, the public services part of it would be resetting. We would accommodate the current conditions that we would be dealing with. And they are much different than what we're dealing with now. It's many more man-hours to do these repairs, and they don't last very long.
Right.
Because of the, you know, you can fix a small area, but the rest of the area is bad, and that eventually catches up with the area you're repairing.
And wouldn't this be similar to what we did with the playgrounds, that by combining projects and having a larger? projects and having a larger project, we were able to get a savings?
Yes, absolutely.
It was with the, poured in place, savings was considerable.
And it would be considerable with this, just contractors.
Right, and we could attract bigger contractors, rather than just the smaller companies, so if we are offering a three-year steady job, we would be much more likely to get more attractive offers, or not offers, bids.
And those types of outfits are gonna do the projects typically more efficiently.
Right.
These are the guys that are used to dealing with sort of the heavy pressure of turnpike work and big PENTO projects, and they're gonna know how to get in and out of these projects efficiently.
Right, right. That economy of scale, that's what made me think of it, when you mentioned that. I think that alone, the considerable savings, if we do it in that respect.
And the customer service levels, too.
That's true, too. Because you're a bigger job for them, right.
It's usually much easier to work with.
Right.
I mean, as far as the long-term benefits, I mean, I think Mr. Savannah could probably answer that, for different municipalities throughout Montgomery County, and what they have invested in their infrastructure and roadways.
So, if we do decide to do a project of this size, who would be leading the project and then maintaining it as we go forward?
Well, my suggestion would be that that's a team effort, it's not necessarily placed on one person's shoulders. You know, that would, these are very...
Complex.
Complex, to say the least. So it would require more of a team effort than, you know, I don't think anybody would have enough time.
I think we'd, yeah, to go off Mr. Sakalowski, I think we'd have to engage some of our consultants as well, in order to actually sequence out what the project would look like.
Okay.
I think that you're, again, you're looking at a larger effort, you're looking at a large program that is going to be over a course of so many years.
Correct.
And you need to schedule it and actually program out what your road program's going to look like.
Yes, so that's what I'm asking, how do we get to that point?
Right.
And you just answered that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And with reaching out to some of the third-party agencies that we deal with now, we'll have a consistent, we'll know who we'll be dealing with.
Okay.
This will be the person that'll be coming to inspect our roads, for instance.
Okay.
And make sure that the inspections are done right. And we'll know who their boss is, and we'll know who their boss is, and when we have issues, we'll know where to go. It won't be piecemealing. It'll be, it'll have to be a team effort to make it done, to make it correct, make it efficient, and definitely make it cost-effective.
So I think one of the first parts of this project, if this was the direction you're gonna go, that you're going to have to understand is gonna happen, is the engagement of the internal team and the external consultant team to get you to a point where you've sequenced it. There'll be costs that are associated with that, which we'll have to account for, and then you'll have to lay out your larger program.
Which is why I'm asking, because they're all things that we'll need to have in the budget.
Those costs are accounted for in the line items.
Okay.
Basically, if you're looking at any particular project budget, this area down here is where you're gonna find things related to those costs. Now, this worksheet doesn't have the same thing, but you're gonna see those professional services fees listed down there to accommodate whatever the needs might be. For certain projects, we need survey, for some we don't. For some projects, we would engage a team to do the design, and then, of course, construction management, onsite inspection. But those costs are estimated in a way that has always been, has worked for me, which is in the neighborhood of fifteen percent of construction cost going into professional services.
Now, is there any questions?
So, our current way of paying for our road programs, you had mentioned, is liquid fuels.
In part, but as of right now, for instance, for the paving project we have right now is one hundred percent liquid fuels, yeah.
Okay. And is there enough liquid fuels money in a monthly payment scenario for a six-million-dollar loan? I'm just gonna ask the question.
No, you're looking at...
Chris is projecting debt service payments around six hundred thousand, six oh?
Depends the term.
Depends on the term.
Right.
So you're...
Ten years, it would be like six hundred and ninety thousand bucks.
And your liquid fuels is around...
Around two hundred and twenty.
Two twenty.
And are there, have we applied, or are there grants available for this type of work, or no? I, I'm not.
For hard infrastructure work?
Well, we have the matching funds, too.
Yeah.
We will have the matching funds.
Grants are difficult for that type of, what you, what everybody, what most municipalities are basing their, is off liquid fuels. They're using liquid fuels money to either do all their work, infrastructuralize, for roads, or they're using a mixed combination.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just asking the question if there is any type of other aid that we can...
You see a lot of, you know, grants for environmental-related things and parks improvements, recreation and things like that, it's more difficult to find funding for just what is kind of considered, this is your maintenance responsibility municipality, you guys have to pay for it.
You're more likely to find it for a low-volume road.
There is a low-volume road, but that's like not paved roads, and then the only other stretch that you could make is if you're dealing with a particular storm sewer problem, or if you're, part of your street storm sewer is going to help receiving stream or something like that, you might be able to stretch a project and...
Okay, I was just, yeah, just curious.
But keep our eyes open for them.
But as a team, that would be a question to pose to the people in the team. Are there grants available, and how far can you stretch this project in order to possibly get this grant?
And do they have an individual they can dedicate specifically to going for that grant?
Yes, 'cause we now have to know where grants are.
All right, so based on the numbers that you, we spit out just now, six hundred and twenty thousand annually, about two hundred thousand in liquid fuels, we would be responsible to try and identify where we could find four hundred thousand a year, divided by twelve months in a year, we'd have to figure out thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars.
And mind you, that six million dollars was a ballpark figure.
Correct, correct.
That could be somewhat different.
So, we're looking at trying to identify where to find thirty-five thousand dollars a month in our operating budget, if, or our capital, if we wanted to look at it from a capital perspective.
Okay.
And that would be on an annual basis.
Correct, for however many years.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
From my perspective, that's one of the reasons why we want to identify our operational costs.
Correct.
The boroughs now has these buildings that we've never had before, so in three years, Community Center, we have this building. Identifying and narrowing these operational costs to a point where we can say, look, we're gonna be within, let's say, five or ten thousand dollars every year, unless there's some huge incremental cost that we, we're unaware of, gas prices go through the ceiling. But as long as we can identify our operational costs for these buildings, because this is all new for everybody, as long as we can identify this and keep them under control, then at least you can make a more informed decision on these other projects.
So, we have in front of us a decision to make if we, if this is the right year to pull the trigger on a large project, or based on what you just provided us, we still don't know what some operational costs are gonna be based on the fact that we're just in this building a year, and warranties are going away, and what the cost of it. So, we have to decide, is this the year we pull the trigger on the big project? Do we look at it in a multi-year plan and identify what we can do sooner that are some of the trouble spots that have us up at night? That's how I see it right now.
Right, I think even if we do the bigger plan now, it is a multi-year project.
Right.
So it comes down to...
The question really becomes, so, there's usually a front-end time, where as Ray said, you're gonna have to figure out the overall scope, which I think Paul's identified all of the real immediate problems, then you're gonna need to sit down and figure out the sequence that makes sense. Talk to the utility companies and the third parties, who you need to coordinate all that to make sure you get the actual schedule for when you would roll this out, what streets, what infrastructure in each year. That may take you six to nine months or a year of planning, and then the real impact hits when you actually go out and borrow the money. When you borrow the money, you're not gonna spend it all in one year, you may spend that over three to five years, but you're gonna start paying for it the first year, so...
Right.
You may want to consider authorizing the planning stuff next year, which will be a smaller bite.
And we'll have larger savings doing it that way, also in the overall project, right? So...
So one of the options that are in front of you are to look at dedicating and allocating dollars for the actual sequencing and the planning, and continually, continuing to utilize liquid fuels dollars in two thousand and eighteen for what we're, currently what we're doing, and maybe identifying a few areas that are very troublesome that we can add into the budget. That's one scenario that you, that, looking at, that if you're list, that from what we're discussing seems to be a viable option. The other is to give us instruction and say, we want to go in a completely different direction, we want to get this street paved and this street paved, in which case we, we know what the costs, we know what they are, Paul has done the assessment, and then we'll do that. I just don't think that will give you this concept of reset and refresh that you're looking for.
I'm gonna say, I think it's something that probably has been ignored for too long, and we really have to, we have to really seriously consider doing this, because for the residents in the borough, it truly is probably one of the most important things we need, so...
So where did the number of six million dollars come from?
It was a calculation, I pulled numbers off of the infrastructure management plan and just played with some of the options and some of the programs and came up with the six million dollars. I needed to give, put a figure in front of you so you could understand what financing options you had and what that would look like in terms of debt service annually.
So, what, some of the areas that we spoke about, Six and Harry, that's a bad area around the Community Center, so why don't we figure out what that's gonna cost us in dollars, and then make, just borrow two million, and do that, do that part, and then just keep making this...
So Bob, the part with that is, it's gonna cost us twice as much money to do...
Everything in the end.
Everything in the end.
But you can't do it all at once anyway, so you...
But if, yes, but we're spending less to do more.
So it's awarded as one-day contract, that's where the twenty percent saved is made.
You can't shut the whole ten million, either.
No, it's gonna take a course of years, it's just that...
I understand, I understand.
What we're doing is we're deciding on a commit, a long-term commitment for the next basically three to five years, ten years, depending on how we do it.
Those areas would be the ones that would get priority.
But it might not be six million, it might be four million.
Correct, could be, yes.
It was just to give us a number to work with.
So the question is, is we have money in, already allotted in the budget to proceed to get us where we need to be, for all of the information we need to make an informed decision, is that correct?
Yes, I think that the recommendation would be for two thousand and eighteen in terms of infrastructure, to do your sequencing and do your planning, but also at the same time, identify the trouble areas in town, which you might be able to do a quick hitter, I mean, if I'm speaking out of term, let me know, that you might also want to budget for, which we can give you the dollars for. Again, you'd be looking at a smaller project, which might cost you more money, but it might be a problem that needs to be addressed in two thousand and eighteen. Then over the course of two thousand and eighteen, you work with the team, and you get the plan, the scope, the sequencing, and then you, you've already dedicated that, yes, this is the direction we're going, and you finalize your financing options and you move forward.
Because we don't have a plan yet.
Don't have, you don't have a plan, I mean, Paul's been, has assessed and valued the entirety of the borough in terms of the streets and the, how would you term it? The need for the condition assessment.
The prioritization of locations.
Right, so we have, we know that, that information will take with us and expand upon that plan. So what we would need, though, are dollars to allocate, to develop that plan.
So in that scenario, are you saying that we wouldn't actually begin the project work until nineteen?
Potentially, I think the larger scope, yes, in two thousand and nineteen, you'd look at potentially implementing that. Over the course of two thousand and eighteen, though, I know that there are some areas that you could look at to say, we'd like to include this, let's get this done, 'cause this is a problem, but on a smaller scale.
Somewhat similar to what PENTO is doing now. They've come up, their plan is basically a five-year plan. The only thing that will interrupt their plan is obviously a major snowstorm. They had a major snowstorm, they have to allocate funds for that, which may take something off of the road program that they have within a five-year plan. But PENTO's being very, very proactive, we attended a meeting a long ago, and they're being very proactive in this district, finally, for the first time in a long time. Remember that anything that we're allocating here, if they had streets off, that's not ours. The state road on West Downey Street, East Downey Street, a good portion of Paxton Street, those are things that are either done already, or they will be done by the state, and they're not part of this program. So, they add up to several eight miles in the Borough of Conshohocken.
So I think we need to get a plan together, you two guys or the department.
So I think we, I think we need to give them permission to get a plan, that's what we're asking for, and in the meantime, allocate money for what, the worst of what we need to start doing, like on Maple Street.
So that's the hole that we have right now in our capital budget. We had a hole to say, what is it, what is the direction that we think we want to go? Do we want to be the council that plans for the future and brings the future a little more current, or do we want to continue just putting the hat and gloves on and not actually put the infrastructure in place? You know, last year, we spent a lot of time talking about our families and our park programs and, and the different pockets of seniors and all the different people that we wanted to address with our capital projects. This year, are we committing to the, to it being our infrastructure? I think is what we have to decide. And then, is, is the route that we're gonna go, and you guys would have to tell us the dollars that you think we would need to allocate for sequence and planning, and then identify what are our problem streets, knowing we have some liquid fuels money, and then is there something else that that won't cover, so that we can identify dollars for the capital budget, because we may have to go back and pull something that we thought was there, if that's more important, and that's kind of somewhere where the other discussions will go.
That sounds good to me. I think that's the direction we should go.
Everyone okay with that?
Yep.
Did you understand what we just did there, Scott?
I did.
Because that was very confusing.
No, I got it, I got it, so I'm gonna say it back, just to make sure we have it.
Okay.
We will get you what dollars you'll need to allocate for two thousand and eighteen to look at the planning and the sequencing phase of a larger infrastructure program. At the same time, we will provide an administrative perspective in trouble areas that need to be addressed in two thousand and eighteen, and the costs that are associated with doing that. Therefore, you can then evaluate those, both of the sets of dollars, how it fits into your overall capital budget, and you can decide if you have the funds able to do that.
So, there's currently a project sitting there with liquid fuels dollars that might be able to cover it, that we thought maybe we should move forward with for two thousand and seventeen?
Mm-hmm.
Are we still thinking we should move forward with that for two thousand and seventeen? Or is that part of the, the look at it in two thousand and eighteen and roll the liquid fuels? And can you roll liquid fuels money?
Which project?
I don't know.
The, so the...
Program we have...
There's a program out there.
It's two thousand and seventeen.
The seventeen one.
The seventeen...
We pulled it off this year and put it in the next year.
The one that's, well, that's been awarded.
It's been awarded.
Okay, so it's... So we are moving forward.
We're moving forward with that.
We're processing contracts for that one.
Okay, all right.
We should stay on course, because if we don't, if something happens to the funding or something like that, we're falling behind, so we don't want to fall behind, so we gotta stay the course to keep going.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we're, we're all on the same page with, when we see a road being torn up, what is that?
There are some streets on that list that absolutely need to be addressed.
Need to be. So that, that's the scenario we're talking about.
Okay, right.
Okay.
I feel good about that decision.
Okay, gentlemen?
Thank you.
Okay. I don't know if you feel good. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
It's pretty, it looks like, for me.
Take a break? Do we need to take a break? Okay. All right. Okay, just keep going.
Manager's business.
A few manners, a few matters under manager matters. We have an international trash truck that is out of service, and we are asking for you to consider approving the auction of this truck through municipal, starting at a bid of twenty-five thousand, accepting a little bit of twenty thousand. That will be on your agenda for the twentieth. We have a request for a fee waiver from Saint John AME Church. Stacy Hudgens is actually in the audience. They're having a Pink Pearls of Hope tea in November at the community center, and they have requested, it's on Saturday, November fourth, from twelve to four, and they have requested use of the facility, which they are registered to do so, and requested a waiver of the fee. So again, that will be on your agenda on the twentieth unless you have any other questions. Okay. Supplemental appropriations, these items will all be on your agenda for the twentieth as well. They are carryover projects from two thousand sixteen. Specifically, there is the finalization of the project, the monument sign outside of Borough Hall. There was the release of the retainage, the finalization of the electric work, and the hookup of all the technology into the building so that all our systems worked and were compatible with the sign outside. An additional supplemental appropriation is a carryover unpaid invoice from the two thousand sixteen road program, again, bringing it to your attention, just because it's unpaid invoice, it needs to get paid, and it's not currently in the budget. And the last one, which we have discussed internally in terms of reconstructing the exit of the alley on to Tenth and Eleventh, Mr. Savona and I actually had conversations this afternoon. There's a little bit more legwork we need to do on this administratively in terms of right away and what we can and cannot do, so for this evening, I'm going to leave it on your supplemental appropriation for consideration on the twentieth. And if if it is okay with you, I'd like a little bit more time internally to address and review and analyze it. Okay? So what will be up for consideration on the twentieth are supplemental appropriations in the amount of twenty-one thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents. They will be coming out of capital fund two thousand seventeen surplus and or contingencies. We have the dollars. It's a matter of just administratively processing them. Good, any questions on those?
That includes the road program from twenty sixteen?
That's correct. So again, that number is twenty-one, five ninety-eight, fifty-seven. Can I keep, want me to keep going? Okay. Department matters. Mr. Zinni and Mr. Gunning would like your permission to host a fire prevention demonstration for Fire Prevention Week in October. Getting the date. It would be Thursday, October twelfth, two thousand seventeen, from seven to nine P. M. They would have to close West Fourth Avenue between Fayette Street and Forest Street beginning at six P. M.
They do it every year.
Do we just need to approve that?
Yes.
I'll make a motion?
I got a motion at second.
I'll second.
I got a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
For the next agenda item, Sergeant Connor could come to the podium. We hear from our constituents on a regular basis about noise on Elm Street, and I wanted to take the opportunity to highlight the police department's efforts in taking the initiative to reach out to PennDOT, and I would say probably at this point bugging PennDOT and actually being successful in what Mr. Connor can review, Sergeant Connor can review.
Right, we had a been receiving concerning information about the traffic and the noise going through West Elm Street. Part of the problems that were being brought to us was the truck traffic coming through. In an effort to help quell some of the complaints, we did reach out to PennDOT, had regular conversations with them. They understood the issue, but through built in bureaucracy, they uh, they tried their best to expedite our concerns. So in that, we were able to install with PennDOT approval in a pretty fast amount of time, as far as PennDOT goes, some prohibitions that were installed legally by PennDOT, recognized through the state. Signage was brought pretty quickly through the help of Public Works, and we installed the signage that enforces brake retarder prohibitions from a selected area, starting in Plymouth Township near the steel plant and ending in the commercial area at Stoddard and Oak and in that zone. So that has been installed. We're now working with them to see if we can expedite the road servicing on West Elm Street, which was alluded to earlier by Public Works, but that will take a little more effort than putting up a couple signs, so we are trying to help out the concerns of the residents down there.
Thank you.
And we also got to look into a truck route coming off the Schuylkill Expressway or the Blue Route, that there is a, there used to be truck route signs, and a lot of truckers know it where they're supposed to drive their trucks.
Correct.
And I think Lieutenant Metz, he's not here tonight, he said he was going to look into it.
Yeah, we did have a conversation before we took vacation leave, and yeah, there was some signage before the state is able through regulation to adjust as needed or withdraw. We're trying to see if that's able to be reinstalled again. Something had to do with the Blue Route construction and the ramps that were put down that period. That was temporary. They're going to look to see if now with the redevelopment and the new traffic concerns in the modern time, if we can re-implement them again, so that'll take a little bit of time too.
So based on the last time we had this discussion about trucks and going down roads that they're not supposed to be, I became a truck stalker. So I actually followed a truck that went down Sixth Avenue, right where the sign said no trucks allowed, and I kind of followed trying to see what he was up to. He basically had himself caught in a loop because every which way he tried to go, there was another no truck sign.
Right.
So is someone looking at the loop so that they don't get caught up, like not having a sign and then getting caught in the loop?
I'm not aware of any active effort to identify what you had seen.
Just asking, because I became a stalker, because I I was interested in what their.
Part of hamstringing some of that is trucks are allowed to, as long as they have business in that.
Delivery.
In that neighborhood, they're permitted to go through, the no truck signs are for passing through. So to be able to have deliveries made, you can't.
He wasn't delivered, he was lost, he got himself all turned around.
So, yeah, that's.
I was just curious, maybe he was scared of you. Did he get scared of me? He may have been, it was crazy.
I think he was trying to, he was trying to ditch you.
He had a stalker.
Thank you, Sergeant Connor. Mr. Sakalowski, if you can just come to the podium and give a brief overview of PennDOT's paving of Elm Street.
Uh, we found out last month that PennDOT will be doing West Elm Street from Fayette Street to Caldwell Lane. We're going to probably talk to them about maybe going a little further, all the way to the bridge, because there's some indications that the road is failing there, and there's some ripples from tractor trailers. So at the meeting that we attended, myself and Stephanie attended, they told us that they would probably, they were going to, they're going to do this work at night, which is one of the things, one of the questions that we had about night work for for that area. But after our conversations, seems that that is probably the best time to do it, especially for that intersection, that area. It should be a project that should take about four weeks. The only problem that we're going to have is the advance notice. We're probably looking at maybe thirty days of advance notice, and I mean maybe, because we're part of twenty-six other municipalities that are having worked on it at the same time. And we've kind of narrowed it down. I think the next meeting that we'll attend with them will probably narrow it down even more. They've been very proactive, like I said earlier, in in handling these situations, and it looks like we're looking at somewhere between July and September of twenty, twenty eighteen to get it done. It's been moved up, the last time I talked to them, they were talking about twenty nineteen. So our project was moved up because of the condition of the roads. Like Paul assessed our roads, they've brought in a team into this district and assessed all the roads in our district, and I think theirs was an A, B, C, and we were, and Elm Street was the worst, one of the worst. So again, it should take about two weeks. It's a mill and overlay, we're going to look at the infrastructure to make sure there's no issues with any storm sewers or anything like that. There's already discussion with the sewer authority to make sure that they have no issues, and at least it'll be good for a while.
So Ray, I just want to confirm that I have the bullets right. So you're talking for West Elm from Fayette down to Caldwell, possibly extending to the bridge?
Yes.
The project itself, looking, starting maybe July, September, somewhere in that.
July to September. We didn't want it, we didn't want it to be a September project because of bus traffic, school traffic, so, and we don't want it to be the beginning of July because then we have the other events in the borough, so.
Okay.
We've narrowed it down to probably mid-July.
And the project itself approximately four weeks?
Yeah. On the, on the, on the high end. It it should be about a two, two to three week project, depending on weather.
What is a timeframe that's considered night work?
Well, the, that's going to be regulated somewhat by us. We are going to be part of that. Once a contractor is chosen, we'll have discussions on location as to times, and generally, they'll be in there between eight and nine o'clock to start, and they would finish in and around five o'clock in the morning.
Truly through the night?
Mm-hmm. The issue there is very, very simple. PennDOT, to my surprise, I think that was, I think was surprised to everybody in the room, they're not doing anything during the day anymore. They have decided to do these municipal projects all at night, which is something that you could not get PennDOT to do three years ago. You could, they would, they would go crazy, but they've already allocated the extra money because it's obviously shift differential and overtime for some some groups. They've allocated that money and they and they prefer to do it at night. And it would take, it would take a lot to prevent them from doing it at night. They made made that pretty clear.
In the meeting they did.
And then do we really want that issue there during the day? It's already a F intersection, can't get any worse. It can get worse if you're doing mill and overlay there during the day.
Right.
We're going to talk to them about removing all their equipment from the area during the day, so whether that's our yard at Seventh Avenue or whether they will have an independent location offsite where they'll lay down all their equipment, so we won't have to worry about that. It'll be a wide open road in the morning and shut down for a good portion of the night.
So there will be a time period where you can't travel on it for nearly several days?
They'll have detours for the most part. The way mill and overlay works, it's just going to be one lane at a time almost, but um, there'll be detours when necessary, but for the most part, there'll be at least one lane open. They haven't given me any indication that they would have to shut it down totally. That was a question we we asked, and that's not one of the roads that they were really worried about, worried about, especially since it's night work.
Right, right, okay, good, thank you.
Okay.
We'll keep you updated with any changes to schedules. The next item on the agenda is a consideration for Fun Fest, so just schedule for Fun Fest is September twenty-third. There is a race and walk starting at nine forty-five, the run starts at ten, the main event is from eleven to six, and then there is a concert that's from six to eight between first and second, so schedule. The race, there are proceeds that are generated from the run and the walk. Last year, they were approximately fifteen hundred dollars. The Fun Fest committee has asked if council would consider donating the those proceeds to organizations within the borough, specifically the fire police, the free library, and Conshohocken Elementary. So what is in front of you would be whether or not you would consider making that donation to those organizations listed.
Is the committee making a recommendation on those three?
They are. They have stipulated those three organizations.
Do you need a motion?
It would be ideal to have a motion since.
I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
I got a motion, I got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
That's all that I have, Mr. President.
Legal matters?
No legal matters, Mr. President.
Okay.
Council members, mayor?
Yeah, just one quick follow up on the stop signs on West Sixth Avenue. I did have a call from a person representing three of her neighbors requesting that we take the stop signs down.
Have a reason?
There was a variety of reasons, I won't list them here now, but just to let you know that there has been the expected kickback. Pointed out where we at least want to continue to monitor the police department. We want to definitely leave them up through the school opening weeks, make sure everybody kind of gets their act together. And again, at ninety days, we'll take a hard look at it and see what we want to do. So she's not not too thrilled with the ninety days, but she didn't have a problem with maybe mid-September or late September, something like that, so. Just so you know, because it was a somewhat of a controversial issue.
Kelly?
I just want to say, if anyone hasn't seen it, the fence around the A Field.
Looking good.
Is looking very nice, it it really is setting off up there, it looks great, it should be done very shortly, I'm assuming there's not that much left, right?
Couple weeks.
Couple weeks, yeah. And I would also like to thank our police department for all their hard work in the last few weeks on traffic control and in the different areas in Conshohocken for watching the speeding and all the different issues that the residents have raised in the last couple weeks. I know that has been something that you guys have been working very hard on, and I know the council appreciates it, so we'd like to thank you very much for that.
Well?
Yeah, I have a few things. Lieutenant Metz is not here tonight, I was hoping he would be here, but I can run through this. We have a, an organization in this town, and I know a lot of people really appreciate them, but I don't think that we give them enough appreciation, the fire police. I mean, every time we have an event, we have something going on in this town, they're always there for us, and I mean, these guys don't get any, that I know of, I mean, they don't get any kind of salary or anything like that. So I'm going to ask council, we could and give them some kind of appreciation, luncheon or dinner for what they do for our community, because I think they deserve it. So I'm just asking that and.
Do we make a motion?
Yeah.
I think it's something we can discuss and and plan.
And plan, yeah, something we can plan.
Okay.
Also, I had a, and maybe there's some members from the fire department here tonight. We have an apparatus that we're going to put up for auction, and I had a gentleman approach me, Jesse Stempel, okay, everybody knows Jesse, you guys know Jesse?
Know Jesse?
He he approached and asked if he could maybe, we could donate that apparatus to him and the fire school academy, and in back, he would pay us back in training for fire police, firemen, and police. So I'm asking council to consider it, consider that, and maybe the fire department can help us out with that, what benefit that would be to us by doing that. John?
Yeah, what do you benefit to us? Because every time members go, there's a cost for the training, but we go to the academy where they still come and do it anyhow.
And he would, he would match the price of the apparatus that we were going to get for the auction.
What's the wrong guy on that, John?
On the training? On the training?
No, on the truck.
I think Stephanie has that.
Fifty thousand dollars?
So just to clarify from a legal standpoint, how, if this is the direction you wanna go, you'd have to do this, um, the truck would still have to be bid. So it would, um, go up on you, minister bid. One of the stipulations in the bid notes would be that an acceptable form of payment would be the, um, acceptance in the transfer for training, basically. So you'd still have to go through the bid process. Um, you might get other bids, but the fire academy would have to bid on it, and we'd have to specify that that was an acceptable form of payment.
Well, they have to bid on it, and it would have to be the highest bid.
Right.
So it's a little risky for, we can't just give them the fire truck in exchange for, um, training services, that's...
But there is a dollar value to that training, a lot of it.
Understand though, Bob, that, that, the only way you can dispose of the truck is through competitive bidding.
Right.
So it would have to go out to the open market, and if somebody outbids, if they bid fifty thousand dollars in service or in-kind service, and someone bids fifty thousand and one dollars, that's technically the high bid. And, you know, it, it, it gets to be a little precarious. I'm not gonna comment if I'm the fire school, but if I wanna make sure I get the truck, I may have to overbid what it's really worth in order to guarantee that I get it. Not exactly the ideal, um, arrangement in terms of disposal of the vehicle.
I think I gotta go to bid.
I, I, I'm just clarifying that we were still proceeding with bidding it. We'll put a stipulation in there. Um, we can't guarantee that the fire academy would get it.
No, I'm just, I'm just re-
But you reiterate, yes.
I'm requesting the fire school to counsel.
So what Mike is saying is we have to bid it?
Absolutely has to be bid.
And just put that stipulation in that we would accept training in lieu of paying.
I'll deliver a message back.
Training in lieu, training in lieu of paying.
John, John has a question.
I, I actually have something else. Uh, the, the truck that we're looking to get rid of has a foam system on it, a compressed air foam system on it. The county does have, uh, a foam task force, so as well as using the truck, the fire academy for training, they can also use that truck as part of their foam task force.
So why can't we, why, is it the county that has that, John?
The county has the foam task force.
So why can't we explore transferring it to the county? I mean, a municipal to municipal transfer is a lot easier to do.
You could, you could talk to Justice Brown on that.
You do a one?
If you're, so if, between, if, if the county, if, if the county has the ability to take title to the vehicle, you can negotiate a transfer to the county, municipality to municipality without going through public bidding. And then in exchange for that, the, you know, the fire academy could gratuitously donate us service or, or, or give us an allocation that, you know, might be reflective of the value.
Is council, is council, what do you think about this?
Sounds good.
Sounds okay.
I'm okay.
Sounds good.
All right, so why don't we do this? Don't, don't, don't make any motion or take any action tonight. Let Stephanie and I work through the logistics of this and see if we can come up with a mechanism to accomplish what you're trying to do that doesn't get us in trouble.
Okay.
Uh, one more thing. I had quite a few, um, residents, not just from my district, but from all around town, about the condition of our town, the weeds.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I did ride around, I mean, uh, Jerry McTammany used to take care of that. I mean, we had him out there all the time. I mean, he would go up the alleys, look over, he, I mean, he was great at it. And the town is looking a little shabby with the weeds. Um, people just don't wanna pull those weeds in, they don't wanna take care of it. I mean, we have trees, four or five foot high, growing out of people's sidewalks. I mean, it's a disgrace.
We have trees we can't walk under, too. I, we might as well put that on the list.
Right. And also, we have stop signs, the trees are, the branches are hanging down, but it's up to the residents to remove it. But I think we have to take action. If we have a stop sign, the residents not doing it, we should take care of it and then bill them or whatever we have to do to make our street safe.
Right, give them a warning.
Give them a warning.
Right.
But we have to cut that branch, because there are some branches hanging in front of stop signs and you can't see the stop signs.
Right.
Or red light, I mean, all, all kinds of signage.
That'll be up to you, Paul, to get the code enforcers out there.
Have, have we delivered letters? I think our new process is letters first before enforcement. Have we done that?
Yeah, well, actually, we eliminated a step that was added last year because the process is becoming a little bit subversive, where you get some action stuff. One of the things that Stephanie and I have been talking about is more systematically authorizing the work to get done, assuming that we follow the right process and then we provide a proper notification, getting somebody out there faster physically, get grass cut, get weeds cut, so that we can get the work done and then end up dealing with the enforcing, you know, names and such on the backend, so we're following it correctly in the process. But typing that window, so, uh, a couple of months ago, maybe the first step was to sort of take out kind of a middle courtesy notice, so it's kinda like one too many letters. We're satisfying our legal obligation, but, um, also providing, um, multiple notices so that it's not kinda too farcical to, to residents that might have just looked at mine and been around in, in grass. We're trying to give people, um, in a particular week, if we give them a notice, we're trying to give them two weekends, so they have a weekend, not assuming that people are gonna jump up and vote on, on, on a weekday necessarily, but at the end of that second weekend is when we wanna start to look at whether we wanna just start to take action, get them, get the lawn mowed, get the weeds cut whenever the three days might be, and then deal with the collection after that.
Are we only doing that based on complaints that come through the various methods? Or are we doing a monitoring process?
There is a monitoring. I think that, uh, one of the pieces of feedback that I get from, from my staff is that the alley monitoring is cumbersome and they keep asking for, uh, legislation to require house numbers on the back of the houses, so that they can just go down the alley, see the house number written down, you know, put the door hanger. As it stands now, they kinda have, a lot of the road, I'll just say Hector Street and Angel Alley, because they have to count the houses and drive around and count again to pick up the number. So, you know, I kinda have to stay on them to make sure that they're not just letting those things go because of it, because it's corruption. They have to get it done, but it's not quite as efficient as, uh, as maybe it could be.
And that's something, these house numbers, we, we talked about this years ago. It's important for the fire department, the police. I mean, our residents use them alleys all the time, I mean, and it's quicker to go up the alley and, and park, get a policeman up the alley and a fire engine than sometimes up one of our streets. So I think we should maybe enforce that, that we need to have people put their addresses in the back of their homes. I mean, some, most of them don't have them in the front, so.
Some people don't, right?
Something we can discuss.
Right.
Um, I was just thinking, we are making a couple motions tonight. I feel like we have this representation from St. John's AMC Church, and why don't we have a motion to pass their, ask for a waiver on their fees for their charity event so they don't have to come back another night and listen to all the municipal business?
That's a good idea.
I would, so I...
Yes, I'll make a motion.
I got a motion, I got a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
They enjoyed it, though, they enjoyed this time.
This is a long meeting, considering. My goodness, they've been so gracious, and I think that that would be very, that's all I have.
You'll have to come back.
And it's a wonderful event for breast cancer awareness.
It is, it sounds fabulous. Sounds very elegant.
Do you have?
Did you go?
Tina?
Oh, me, um, no, we have the comprehensive plan task force tomorrow evening. We'll go through another chapter or two of our, um, preliminary, the, oh, I do have something. So, um, today or tomorrow, my gates are a little messed up, mishmash, ends the electronic submission for, I'm sorry, ends the paper submission for the, um, employee in my other job. The, the survey, yes, the resident survey. Um, and, um, next week opens, September eighth, see, I was close, opens the electronic version. So, um, we're encouraging all the people here, if you didn't get a paper version of the survey, please go onto the borough website, tell your friends to go onto the borough website, and please make sure your voices are heard, um, so that we can really, um, get the voice of the town into what it is we're building as our, um, comprehensive plan for the future. Sorry, I'm all confused. If I'm a Jefferson or Conshohocken tonight.
I got something, Paul. Yeah, I'm going on to this trash thing again. I don't know what these people are, they don't understand Monday on, on the holiday and that we don't pick up trash. I keep telling them down the street and everything. And then you go down there now, and the trash been down there, out there since Sunday on Hector Street and on the Eighth End. So my thing is, when we get these holidays on a Monday, take one of your code enforcers on a Tuesday and ride around there, if they haven't pulled their trash back to the curb or into the yard, give them a warning or a citation. It rained tonight, it'll probably be all on the street tomorrow. And, and the, and the trash, the guys on the trash yard, that's not their job, that's our code enforcers' job.
It's good to do that, it's fair, it's on your side. Chris Muller was on vacation last week, so I apologize, I shouldn't have been doing first things to cover that, that side of the borough as well. But, uh, they're, they get regular calendar vacations after every holiday, morning after every holiday to, to go around and check.
Yeah, that's right.
I apologize, Chris Muller's on vacation, so we probably didn't cover your, your street there.
All right. Okay. And I got one more thing.
Public comment.
Public, oh, I'm sorry, that's what I said, I got one more thing, public comment.
Yeah, one more thing.
Uh, one more thing, any public comment? Not guys there? Step forward.
You guys speak with the public?
Yes.
Good evening, thank you. Um, Sister Stacy Hudgen, and this is Sister Edna Brock from St. John AME Church. We wanna first say thank you for approving the waiver for our T. We appreciate it very much. Um, in line with, um, Mr. Stokely, um, and Sister, uh, Stephanie Checo, we have, um, on September 28th, a great event coming up to thank the borough for everything that you do for us. I'm a little nervous, excuse me. To thank the police department, the fire department, borough hall workers, um, uh, safety and, uh, maintenance. We're having a, um, Conshohocken Community Workers Appreciation Day. Sorry, I'm nervous. At our church on, um, 100 East Eighth Avenue, St. John AME. It's a dinner to thank everybody for what you're doing from 12 o'clock to 5 o'clock. We know that, uh, everyone is gonna be working and busy, so you can come in and sit down and have a meal, or you can take a plate to go. We have a wonderful menu, um, in line. We have fried chicken, baked macaroni and cheese, string beans, salad, all the goodies and desserts. And Mayor Frost, he knows we, we really do it up, so we're looking forward for everyone coming out on the 28th. Uh, we're asking if you would please, um, sign up on the, um, sign-in sheet that was disseminated to all the, uh, AM departments, so that we can have, uh, enough food for everybody, and they have the count for everybody. So we're looking forward to, uh, that day, and we just wanna say, say thank you for a job well done. So, 12 o'clock to 5 o'clock on September 28th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name's Scott Langstein, uh, resident of 200 West Elm Street. Um, just during the PICO presentation, I just, uh, a question came to my mind, um, do you know if you, uh, I guess, do you competitive, uh, electric supplier? Do you like contract for, um, just like how residential we can choose our own electric supplier? Do you do that for, I guess, the fellowship house and these other areas? Um, do you bid that out at all, or do you pay the PICO rate for electric supply?
Uh, the borough's not required. It's one of the exceptions to public bidding, it's for utility providers, um, so we don't, we're not required to bid competitively. Um, I don't know that the borough's ever explored changing the, the actual, obviously you always pay PICO for the delivery charge.
Right, right.
I'm sure they've never looked at...
So we are actually currently in the process of doing an energy audit.
Okay.
Internally, for administrative perspective, um, and that's being coordinated with our Director of Public Services. Um, the results of that we don't have yet, because we're current, we're literally in the midst of it right now.
Okay. Cause I mean, I, I'm on the board at the condo association.
Okay.
And I know, we contract with a firm that then kinda goes out and bids, uh, across the nation for, uh, you know, electric suppliers, and then we contracted it for, I think, a three-year term or something like that. So just something maybe to consider that you can get a lower rate, cause I know PICO, the PICO person said 11 cents, uh, per kilowatt, and, I mean, we're paying like less than seven cents.
Right.
Um, so just something to consider to save some money. Um, the other question I had was just, uh, 200, or for West Elm Street, the, the paving project, I thank you for reaching out to Pendot. I actually submitted some complaints to Pendot a number of weeks ago about, um, you know, road issues around the area, uh, and specifically identifying a couple of issues with West Elm Street. They responded saying that they're gonna be paving in 2018, and, um, they'll be doing some patch and repairs, and then probably close my tickets. But there's definitely some issues with West Elm Street where there's brick kind of showing from the, underneath the surface, like, I don't know if it was a brick road before, but, um, just wondering if there's any way you can kind of facilitate maybe then, you know, in your conversations to, uh, maybe try to come out and patch and repair that sooner rather than later, cause I know 2018, or July 2018's a little bit of ways. Um, and they just seem to close the ticket and just say, yeah, well, patch and repair, but they didn't really schedule anything. And other complaints I had submitted to them, they said, well, this will be addressed such and such week, and, you know, they had it scheduled out, um, but this one, they just closed it, I don't know. So just looking to see if, if in future conversations you have with them to...
So if we, if and when we have conversations with our contact through Pendot, we can bring that up, um, we'll, we'll, again, we'll handle that administratively.
Okay.
I can't promise anything, but I can at least have the conversation.
Yeah, that's all. I mean, I'm gonna submit, uh, complaints against them and be like, you closed it, but you didn't address the issue.
Right.
So, I think they're just, you wanna, you know, close the ticket.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rosemary Northcutt from 112 East Sixth Avenue. Um, my niece, my niece Anna joined the Annapolis Junior Rowing Club Team when she was in middle school, and she loved it. Uh, she went to Dartmouth and rode all four years. She was the captain of the varsity rowing team. The Ivy League schools don't give scholarships for rowing and other sports, but many other schools do. That is just one of the reasons I was thrilled to learn that our borough had entered into a partnership with the Haverford School and Malvern Prep to create the Conshohocken Rowing Center. At that time, many promises were made to the Conshohocken community. The CRC would open river access to a community that hadn't had it in 150 years. The rowing center would give borough children and adults who otherwise may never have gotten a chance, access to the river and rowing. The center would include a community rowing bay that would be open and available to the Conshohocken community. The Malvern Prep and the Haverford School coaches would coach borough children and residents who wanted to learn to row and compete, beginning in the summer of 2015, with their high school rowers assisting as a community service. There were many, many promises. The borough provided the land along the Schuylkill River under a long-term lease for one dollar a year. The two schools fundraised and paid for the building. The borough bought leased 11 boats, I'm not clear about that financial arrangement, and the Conshohocken Rowing Center opened, offering a variety of programs for the two schools, the CRC club team, and others. I have asked about, but have never been able to get specific information about the following. How many Conshohocken children and adults have actually learned to row and compete at the CRC? How many Conshohocken residents have used the boats bought and/or leased by the borough? Is there a community rowing bay, and how do residents of Conshohocken access it? At the March 2nd, 2016 council meeting, which featured a presentation by the CRC, Carrie Hanlon of Conshohocken's Yoga Home asked if equipment for adaptive rowing was available and being used at the CRC. Coach Stefanik of the Haverford School said steps were being taken to add such equipment. Carrie's son, Sean Hanlon, died of respiratory failure on August 24th at the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. Although Sean will not be able to benefit from such a program, Carrie and her family remain committed to expanding community opportunities for those with disabilities. And so, is there adaptive rowing equipment at the CRC, and is it being used? The Conshohocken Rowing Center... at the CRC, and is it being used? The Conshohocken Rowing Center should be a wonderful resource for the residents of Conshohocken. It is now September 2017. The classes for the CRC Fall Youth Program are forming. How many Conshohocken teens will be part of this program? When will a full evaluation of how the CRC has lived up to the promises made when this partnership was finalized be carried out? I ask you, our borough council members, to do all that you can to ensure that this touted public-private partnership brings the promised benefits to our community, to the residents of Conshohocken. Thank you.
Any more public comment? Meter adjourned.